People could put their hate mail in our stockings, like we could put it like right around. They could turn this into a fireplace.
No, that's kind of.
A faux brick and then have our names on little stockings.
Yes, I think that's very cute.
And then that's for the hate mail though.
Oh, no.
Merry Christmas.
No, no.
Here's all the things we're on a happy.
No, we're gonna stay positive. We're gonna stay positive.
What about that, one of these screens we can put?
All right, I'm going live on the speakers.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, put a fire.
All right, I got it. I'm thirty. Speakers are on.
Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The prayer today is Heavenly Father, make this month of December a month of healing and good health. Bless the days with your, with your peace of mind. Heal and calm the troubled mind. This month marks the end of another year, a year filled with both challenges and blessings. I thank you for your faithfulness through it all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning, commissioners. So just to the public, good morning. A couple admin notes. I'll be managing public comments. So there's two public comment periods. The first one, which is now, is going to be for items that are on the agenda. So the whole point of the first public comment period is for you to make statements on items that are relative to the agenda to potentially impact decisions that the commissioners are gonna make here today. There is a public comment period at the end, which is for any other business that you'd like to bring up. Just a quick admin note, we do have overflow chambers set up in the conference room down the hall. So if it does get a little bit packed in here, you're welcome to go down the hall and you can hear and see everything that's occurring in this conference room. You can hear it down the hall. Also, just, this is said with the utmost respect to the public, just as a reminder that even though you're making a public comment, there is no requirement for any member of the board to respond to you. So please keep that in mind. And my business cards are at the back. So if you have any suggestions, comments, you're welcome to pick up my business card and send me an email or give me a call. And then finally, just a reminder that comments are limited to three minutes per person and I'll be timing them. Do we have anyone that's gonna make a public comment today with anything connected to the agenda?
There was no one signed it.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to item number two, reporting on the financials for December 2nd. There was a supplemental deappropriation from JFS in the emergency services grant, the auditor in the mortgage revenue bond fund, and from the engineer in their Huntington Ridge Stormwater Fund. There was also a cash transfer from the commissioner's office to the unemployment rotary fund. There was a transfer from the engineer's office from their road and bridge fund to their maintenance road fund for projects completed this year from the maintenance road fund. There was also a transfer from mental health from their Adams Board Fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. There was a travel encumbrance from JFS to accompany a child in custody to a court mandated visit. There was a voucher for $73,000 from the Department on Aging to Driv verge Vehicle Innovations LLC for a new Ford T350 Transit van to replace the unit that was totaled earlier this year. There was a voucher for $263,302.75 from the engineer to Oglesby Construction Incorporated for their application of pavement markings on various county roads. There's also a voucher for $349,330 from the engineer to Miller Builders LLC for the construction of a new salt storage building. And finally, there was a revenue decertification for the auditor in their mortgage revenue bond fund for the revenue that will not be received in 2025. And that completes my report for item number two. Moving on to number three, on December 5th, I approved for the Department on Aging the promotion of Melissa Wheeler to the position of full-time senior centers manager, number 1003, at the rate of $32.17 per hour, grade E16, step one, to be effective December 8th, 2025, with 180-day probationary period. Also, on December 5th, I accepted for community and economic development the resignation of Tina Brunig, Office Coordinator, number 1412, to be effective December 5th, 2025. And that completes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for special meeting of September 24th, 2025.
So I'm gonna abstain from these. I wasn't at that meeting and, you know, per Roberts Rules of Order, I could still vote on them, but it was such a different meeting from our typical meetings that I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sittler.
Call for vote.
Hi.
Commissioner Bricky.
Abstain.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning, Adrian.
Adrian Gordon with the commissioner's office. Today's financials include various appropriations, transfers, and supplemental appropriations and deappropriations to adjust accounts and funds to balance for final invoices and payroll to year end, including the auditor, ADP, engineer, building department, maintenance prosecutor, board of elections, coroner, community development, juvenile court, water resources, and common pleas. Among the other financials, there are travel encumbrances from the commissioner's office to attend the 2026 Ohio Public Employers Labor Relations Association training in Columbus, Ohio, from the engineer to attend the County Engineer Association of Ohio Winter Conference, also in Columbus, and from JFS to accompany a child in residential placement on a visitation. There's also then and now from water resources to the treasurer of the state of Ohio for new construction stormwater application fee invoice from December of 2025 that was not previously encumbered. Among the vouchers is 1.5 million from the auditor's ARPA fund to SHOK Construction Company for payments related to the McFarland Creek wastewater treatment plant upgrades project. And finally, there are revenue certifications and decertifications for ADP and their contract services fund, common pleas and the drug court fund, community development and the demo and site revitalization and brownfield remediation funds, JFS and their workforce development fund, from the juvenile court and the juvenile recovery fund, and from water resources in the McFarland wastewater treatment plant upgrades fund.
I've moved you through the financials.
Second. Call for vote.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Go ahead.
So Adrian, what happened with the transfer that we had talked about on Friday that was coming from the sheriff's office?
I received a request from Pam McMahon at the auditor's office to pull that transfer that they had decided to fund ADP through internal transfers between the auditor and ADP.
And, because I know that there was a concern of being able to make the payroll, correct? That they had, they did not have enough money in their account?
ADP does not, so I'm assuming that they are going to be transferring employees out of that fund and into either an auditor account or into the, the real estate assessment fund in order to pay them. The rationale that they're using for that is that this is some sort of reimbursement or credit to ADP for services that were rendered to both auditor and the real estate assessment fund.
And about how much was it? Do you know?
I don't know the total of all their transfers, but I was, when we were contemplating transferring available appropriations from the sheriff to ADP, it was a little over $132,000 in total for salaries, opers, and hospitalization that they were gonna need.
Okay. So, so when would that, when, when would those transfers be taking place?
The, one of the, one of the transfers and also a supplemental are all on the financials for today.
Right. And enough to, that it's gonna cover to not hold up payroll?
For, for this payroll, the end of this week, yes. We'll, we'll have to see for the last payroll of the year. I'm assuming that they, they have enough. It just depends on, you know, the, the timing and different things, so. But we can, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Later in the month.
Okay.
I see Auditor Walters here. Did you wanna make any comment on that?
Yeah, well, um, yeah, we have to. So, you know, we have no intention, we never asked for any monies to be transferred in for ADP. This year, different than other years, we are doing our accounting a bit, a bit different and unusual in ADP. And that is normally when ADP does work for the auditor or GIS, we bill throughout the year. So I will move money from GIS or the auditor's funds to pay for the ADP people that are working on New World, ISSG, or the Esri GIS product. This year, we did it differently. We waited till the last part of the year. And we did that so we could do true-ups into December. As you know, I'm a bit short-staffed in the auditor's office. I wasn't really happy with the through-the-year period because I couldn't account for things as well. So we're experimenting this year. So I appreciated Adrian reaching out to Pam as he recognized the percentage was high of consumption in ADP, but Pam and I had not yet discussed the action plan and nor did Pam request that money be transferred. So we have adequate funds to, to do it. This week is covered. Next week, we're using some GIS money and we're still working out those details. So, I mean, I think it's, this is a classic much ado about nothing, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I disagree with you, Chuck, that it's a classic much to do about nothing. It's, it's, it's critical, because if we would have had this shortage, we would not have been able to process payroll in the county for all employees.
But Ralph, the big "we" is me. My liability is to pay for my hiring authority.
Right.
And I appreciate your concern for my welfare, as disingenuous as I believe it is. However, I have adequate funds to cover my payroll. I did not ask the commissioners to provide me with any additional resources and the onus is on me to pay my employees. So the emergency that you've obviously manufactured isn't there.
Where's this emergency coming from?
From you.
How are you saying it's an emergency? What, because I, because I had a, a conversation with Adrian based on our financials?
No, because it seems like there's an overemphasis and concern about my being able to make payroll. In the eight years that I've been auditor, have we never not made payroll?
I'm not saying that there is, that, that you have not made payroll, but I think that it's a shell game that you're basically, ADP is, is funded for salaries, right? And there's a certain amount of dollars that was funded for salaries and you exceeded that.
No, I did not exceed that. In past years, ADP's salaries are paid for by different burdens who consume them. This year, for example, ADP went full cloud on New World, which is an auditor program. I have not paid them for that. I waited till December to true that up. Just like any other endeavor, if ADP does work for Russell Township or Bainbridge or Auburn, they send them a bill and they get paid for that service. Auditor is no different. Now, there are some exceptions to that rule that I'm happy to talk to you about. For example, ADP has paid thousands of dollars to move the board of elections from 470 to here. That's never been reimbursed to ADP. ADP put in all the cameras in the elevator. They've never been reimbursed for those cameras. When the board of elections moved into their space in their server room, we had to fireproof that room. We covered that cost and have not been reimbursed for that. We're talking well over $150,000.
But that didn't come out of the salary line?
It did. Employees did that work, Ralph.
Okay.
Employees are the ones who opened that elevator up and helped the guys string the wire. Employees are the ones that worked with the contractor in the basement to secure that server room. Employees are the one who boxed up the computers and moved the board of elections from 470 over three days into the basement.
And I understand that and I appreciate that, but I guess at the end of the day is, is that, that, is that also not part of their job?
To move, to move hiring authorities?
But, but, but you're, you're, you're making it sound like they had this huge, huge surge of dollars that, that was, was part of their, was it not part of their, their day that day?
No.
You know, it's just, I have a concern in, in the sense that, you know, you're, 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 there's just so many, there's so many inconsistencies, you know, your overtime this year is at sixty, close to $60,000. You know, you've got a director. None of our directors in this county make overtime, but your director is probably close to $12,000 in earn.
He's also the lowest price director.
I, I, I would disagree with that.
Price per hour?
I, I would disagree with that.
I run the top fifty.
I, I understand that, but it's, it's, it's just, I can go on and on, you know, as far as, you know, increases that, that, that you've had as far as employees.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is what's irritating me. It seems to me this kind of conversation should be had during my budget hearings, which you didn't show up for.
Right. I was out of town and I, and I'll be totally honest with you. I listened to the tapes and, and, and you basically had a temper tantrum at the end of it. You know, that soon as you get questioned on anything, just like today, anytime you get questioned about anything about your budget, you always have some, some, you know, pie in the sky story to tell of how you're gonna justify it. The bottom line is this, is you overspent your salary budget in ADP.
That's not true.
Okay, so, so, so do you have enough money today in ADP to be able to make your account?
ADP is not funding the people that I've already referred to as doing the work outside of the ADP services.
You know, is it true or is it not true? There's two additional people that ADP has that wasn't budgeted for in '25. So what I'm trying to say is this.
Ralph, is it true or not true that the, the commissioners have hired additional people this year? And are paying them more than the previous people?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay, then that's how life works.
But, but.
You budget at a moment in time and you do your best to work within those constraints. In this particular scenario, as I've explained to you, normally what we would have done is we would have paid off ADP's work as it went throughout the year. This year, we elected to do it differently. We did a true-up in December. I, it was my fault for not telling Adrian that that was my plan. But that doesn't change the dynamic and the fact that those employees were doing something outside of their normal work and they were doing it specifically for a project that I, as auditor, hired.
And I think that my other thing was is I think that there was some other communication that went to one of your directors that was saying, you know, we're, we're, we're getting close on numbers, you know, to, to be aware of some of the, some of the spending, some of the things that are going on. And, and where, you know, where did that go? You know, I think that it's just, I, I just think that there's a, there's a point in time where it's like, we just, I think that we, we need to really dive deep, because if you've got all this extra money that you have in all these other accounts to pay this, then we way over budgeted and over.
I budgeted for the, for New World and auditor. I budgeted for the Esri program in GIS.
I, I mean.
I just didn't pay the people yet.
And, and, and to be totally honest with you, Chuck, I, I did a little bit of homework here too, because I, I, I wanted to just try to bring up a couple of these points is, you know, on the, you know, for, if you look at where we're at as far as ADP and auditor increases, you know, back in 2021, we were at a million two. Today, today's request is gonna be for a million 507. On your auditor, no problem. It's pretty much held steady, sometimes higher, sometimes lower. We understand that. On ADP, okay, in 2021, we were a million and two. Today's appropriation is gonna be over $3.3 million.
There's still appropriations for today?
For the tax budget of what you're, no, but what I'm saying is, is for the tax budget, we're looking at $3.3 million from 1.2. When we're looking at like the refund, you know, you're saying, we're, we're, you know, you're saying that with the refund, you know, in 2020, salaries in the refund, $434,000. In 2025, $800,000. In fund, in fund number 06501, in, in the refund, $259,000 in 2020, to, in, 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 in today's time, in '25, $485,000.
Do you know what the refund is?
Yeah, I am familiar with it.
What is the ref?
For, for the real estate assessment.
And what happens every third year and every sixth year?
And, and I understand that, but what happens where we're having such a huge increase of salaries in those? Those changes, how are they happening?
Required by law to do the reappraisals.
And, and I understand that.
That's why the numbers change every third year. You have to contract these people to do the county-wide reappraisal. I have to do periodic flyovers. I have to do that. That's all part of the statute. The trouble with reef is it's not a constant every year. It's a variable every year, because we're on a cyclic pattern. That's the nature of the beast. I did write those laws. I don't necessarily like them, but I have to follow them. You know, you've been critical of my even doing a reappraisal.
Yeah, I do, because you know something?
I'm required by law to do it.
I understand that, but you know something? I'm gonna be totally candid with you. I would have said this, is, is have the backbone to stand up and say, these houses aren't worth what you're appraising them at.
Ralph, did you go and testify to the Senate and?
I'm not gonna get into the whole testify the Senate and all this other stuff with you. But what I'm telling you is, is that.
And just say I'm not gonna do my job.
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying is, is we have, and this isn't just Georgia. This is the whole state of Ohio that has this problem. Don't interrupt me a second. Let me finish. This is the whole state of Ohio that has this property issue where all of these people, in Georgia County, the, the taxes have been inflated to the point that people can't afford to pay these property taxes anymore. And at the end of the day, these houses, look at where the market has gone today. Sure, during COVID, a total crazy time of, of our lives that hopefully we never see again and, and stuff that was worth a hundred thousand was selling for 500,000, but where's it at today? It's starting to go the other way, but yet you're stuck with this bill. You're stuck with this bill of these outrageous property taxes. And what I could tell you is this, is, is that when you're appraising these houses, what's the realistic appraisal? The realistic appraisal is what, not what they were coming out at? And, and, and how many of our residents today are, are reaping the, the negativity of that number? You know, we're burdening our, our, our seniors are, are, are just, they're, they're, they're at their max. Can't afford to, they can't afford to live anymore. You can't afford to do, pay these taxes, you know? And then we're looking at these, these budget numbers that are just absolutely off the charts, you know, paying overtime and paying this, paying that. Let's go out into the real world of, of people that are in factories and people that are in industry and let's go really and look at what, what some of the increases they, they're able to afford from, from, from all of these years of service that we're just continuing to just give out money, give out money. I understand that people have to live and we need to be able to pay fair wages. But when I'm looking at some of these increases that this year happened in ADP of, of, of people getting upwards of 20% increases, and it's not just one or two that you could say, hey, we're giving them a merit. I mean, people are getting four, five dollars an hour raises. That turns out to be ten, eight, eight to $10,000. We've got just this year, after we committed to four, to the 4% that this year started, we basically are in a situation where now we're, we're faced with an additional almost 60-some thousand dollars that you've got into ADP alone of increases. Just on, just on the wage, just on wage increases that, that, that people have gotten. And I understand that there are certain people you need to take care of and help them and reclassify and everything else. But it's like, when does this end? When do we start being accountable to the tax dollar and to the taxpayer? So go ahead and say what you want.
The question I would ask you then, Ralph, you being this concerned about the taxpayers and the burden that they're playing, why would you not once in eight years that I've been auditor, not once, attend a single BR hearing and listen to these people come in and argue and complain and, and pitch their case? and argue and complain and, and pitch their case legitimately that the values of their homes are upside down? And why wouldn't you then vote to reduce their, their house values legitimately, but you don't even show up for the meetings?
Right.
But you're criticizing me doing that and doing my job, and yet I went down three times to the, to the state to argue the property taxes are outrageous. Most of House Bill ninety-six originally was part of my doing with Senator O'Brien. I didn't see you down there. Your solution is we should abolish all property taxes.
It is, and every day, every Saturday, they're at my store getting signatures because we do need a reset.
Please don't interrupt me while I'm talking.
Go ahead.
I just think therein lies the problem. I believe tax reform is what's necessary. You believe tax abolishment is what's necessary. We're both entitled to our opinion, but I don't want, I'm not going to sit here and be lectured that I don't understand, the taxpayers are hurting. I have gone out of my way to fight for the taxpayers. I go and I listen when their, when their house values are over, overvalued and I vote accordingly. But I'm just not going to arbitrarily lower people's values because if you don't understand this, when you lower one person's value in tax, it moves to everybody else. It cheats the rest of the people. So you have to be fair and you have to go according to the law and the requirements. And I understand you don't understand that because you've never done it. You've never once attended those BR hearings, even though you were the prime person on the, on, on that year.
Right, and I select my-
So I would have encouraged you to come.
I select my alternate and I have, I have conversations of, of the process all the time.
Do you?
Yes, I do.
So the times where your alternate didn't show and you didn't show and the treasurer and I were there by ourselves doing it, that was you getting involved in the process?
Yes, yeah, things happen, right?
Yeah. So I, I don't know what you, I, I, I appreciate you just want to bash me. This has been your-
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. I, I think that this is just you basically that can never be asked a question because you always have to be right.
I have been here how many times in the last twelve months to answer your questions? How, when have I not come and answered your questions? When?
Not, not that I recall.
Well, then what's the problem?
What I'm telling you is, is, is you're saying that I'm bashing you, so you're bringing that up. I'm telling you I'm not bashing you.
You're saying-
I'm basically telling you that I'm exploring a concern.
I'm not going to sit here and just let you make false statements about things.
There's no false statements. Do we want to look at the overtime accounts of what you're, of what you're paying in ADP? Do we want to, do, do we want to bring up the, the numbers of the, the pay increases? I'm not here to basically make you look bad.
Ralph, when there's a cyber event, I shouldn't work the weekends? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm not telling you that, don't, not to, okay?
How do you get people to work a weekend if you don't pay them?
You know, we have a lot of our directors, okay, all of our directors. You know, all of our directors, none of them make a dime of overtime. None of them.
What directors are you referring to in ADP?
So, so Frank Antonucci is one example. He's made over ten thousand dollars of overtime this year.
He cashed out vacation in sick time. That's not overtime.
Well, it's in the, it's-
He's entitled to those things.
It's, it's, it's in the overtime account and classified at the, at the time and, time and half rate.
If, if people have a personal day, they can cash them out and it's classified as overtime. Ralph, that's true across the entire county.
I don't quite understand that. How, how do you have a eight-hour day and it's classified as time and a half?
Someone has a personal day, they can cash it out and not take the personal day. That's overtime.
But it, but it should be straight time.
But it's classified as overtime on their time sheet. You only have so many hours in a year you're allowed to work. More than that is overtime.
Hmm, I, I'm having a real hard time understanding that. So you're telling me that if, if a guy has, has, has an eight-hour personal day, that he's basically able to cash that out at twelve hours?
No, he gets eight hours.
At overtime.
And he works the day and gets paid for the day. He cashed out eight hours.
Okay, but you said overtime.
It is called overtime because it's above and beyond his forty-hour week.
His salary.
He's a salary, he's a salary employee.
Salary don't get paid overtime.
They do. There's exempt and non-exempt people and, and salary people are not always exempt from overtime.
Well, shame on you.
Well, let's try to maintain some order in this meeting. Um, so Commissioner, do you have any questions about the financials or can I, um, call the question?
And I, and I appreciate what, you know, Adrian, your, your, your attempt and Sheriff, I appreciate the fact of, 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 of trying to work with, with our, our office to, to try to, um, do a transfer from the, we were originally going to do was transfer, I put, I believe about a hundred and three thousand dollars to cover the ADP overruns.
That transfer was never requested by my office.
In, in my defense, I would never have attempted to do that without some sort of, um, positive, um, input from people in your staff to, to, to check it.
And you did check with, you did check with Pam and then Pam sent an email saying, we don't need it.
Right, but, but prior to that email saying, we didn't need it, on Wednesday through Friday of last week, I was given permission to pursue that because it had been offered by someone within the sheriff's office. So I would not have done that without some sort of positive, um, permission from people within your staff. So in my defense, I would not have done that without that, so. I was told to, to investigate it.
Okay, well, thank you.
By somebody?
In your staff, yes. Actually, two people within your staff.
Who?
I am not gonna, if they, if they want to reveal their names-
I'm the party that's here, asking the que, being asked the questions and this is reminiscent of you talking to my chief deputy without my authority. And you go down a different rabbit hole and then I say, that's not what we're going to do. I, I, I operate the auditor's office. I am there every day.
And I will change how I operate then, I guess, if I can't trust the input of your staff.
Pam mentioned to me last Wednesday that she's working on something. You called her and you mentioned, instead of you going through all of this transfer, why don't I transfer these over-appropriated funds from the sheriff's office? She then met with me on Thursday and I told her, no, we're not doing this. Now, I-
Well, she didn't say anything to me until Sunday, then.
Well, I was not, I was not in the office on Friday.
And I had, I had sent up the, the transfer and it was entered by your staff, by the people that had indicated that, okay.
The clerks who enter it are not involved in decision-making.
Right, okay. Now that I know that, I will.
Are you satisfied with your questions for this? I'd like to call the question.
Commissioner Spitaler.
I.
Commissioner Braking.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Adrian.
Item number six.
Okay, uh, item number six, uh, is, uh, pay request number twenty-six for Infinity Construction Company, um, for the Jogi County Courthouse expansion, GMP number, phase number one and two, expenses in the amount of eight hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and two cents. Um, also number seven, which is, uh, pay, partial payment request number twenty-seven. This was the partial release of retainage that, uh, Infinity had come in and spoken about a few weeks back, so.
Is this the one you abstained on?
Yeah.
Okay. You should just put abstain on there.
I put abstain on or?
You could just write abstain.
Sorry.
Adrian, was that six and seven or just six?
That's six and seven, yeah. Number twenty-six is a, a regular construction permit, partial payment request. Number twenty-seven is the partial release of retainage that we spoke about a few weeks back.
And Adrian, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, but NV five, all the relevant parties have reviewed the invoices. They believe them to be correct, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitaler.
I.
Commissioner Braking.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian. Hi, Sheila.
Good morning.
How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, good.
Okay, this is item number eight. The clerk of courts is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Delta Design Burnview Storage Systems Incorporated to provide mechanical assistance to high-density storage system for the Georgia County Clerk of Court's office as part of the Georgia County Courthouse expansion project with work to be completed within three months of the contract encumbrance in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand nine hundred eleven and forty-nine cents.
Okay, so Sheila, tell us what's going on here because it looks like item number twenty-nine is decreasing for this high-density shelving and then this is adding different shelving?
Correct. So it was the end of October, I was informed that the vendor that was being used could not make the shelving unit work for us. The dimensions and everything were completely different. So at that time, I reached out to an individual who has done work before for the county and for the title office and health department, I believe. Um, and he came out within a few days to look at the space, see what they could do. I know their product. And in the meantime, um, I think Jen from NV five reached out to the manufacturer directly. They are able to also, that was the decrease in the contract that's later on in the agenda. They are able to provide the dimensions I needed. However, their system is a little different with the uprights. They're the same uprights that we currently have, which is, it doesn't work well. Try to explain it. When you have files on both sides, it just has a small wall. So they're open, so you can't hook the dividers if there's files. It just makes it difficult where Delta Design, they have a different upright. So I just felt that that was a little bit more of a better product going forward.
Okay, so, um, I mean, there is an increase in price, so you, you feel that this is a better configuration for your office space?
Yes.
And it's, I mean, um, were you able to get different quotes for the same product or this is, this is it?
There are not many vendors out there that was, yeah.
I mean, I kind of assumed that, but, okay. And does this include the installation as well?
Everything, correct.
Got it. Um, I'll move to approve item number eight.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitaler.
I.
Commissioner Braking.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Shane.
Commissioners? Look on here. Number nine, okay. I printed this off from yesterday, so.
Next round.
So Shane Ajar with the Engineers' Office here to present, uh, several items today. Um, items nine and ten are snow and ice agreements. The snow and ice agreement with Georgia County Board of Commissioners, Georgia County Engineer and Bainbridge Township, to provide snow and ice control for thirteen point four-two miles of county roads including Chagrin, Bainbridge and Washington for the winter season of twenty-five, twenty-six and to pay Bainbridge Township for the snow and ice control in the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. And item number ten, Engineers' Office, uh, asking the board to approve a snow and ice agreement with Chester Township to provide snow and ice control for fifteen point zero-nine miles, including Ca, uh, Wilson Mills, Sperry, Mulberry and Caves for the twenty-five, twenty-six season and to pay Chester Township in the, for ice and snow control in the amount of eighty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
And then how does this differ from then eleven, twelve and thirteen? Or those are for last year, is that right?
No.
Sorry, they are twenty-five, twenty-six.
They're, so the first two, I kept them separate. We are requesting paying the township to do snow and ice control on county roads. And the following three are us doing-
I got it.
Ice control on township roads and they would reimburse us.
Okay, so that's why there's a certain price per mile for nine and ten and then it changes for those other ones?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Um, so I'll move to approve, um, items number nine and ten.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
I.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll do eleven, twelve and thirteen together. Again, we're requesting for snow and ice control, uh, between the commissioners, the engineer and Claridan Township for ice control of nine point three-two miles of township roads, including Ensign, Forest, uh, Hall, Spencer, Stillwell, Taylor Wells for the twenty-five, twenty-six season. And Claridan Township will pay for snow and ice control in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Item number twelve, snow and ice control between the commissioners, engineer and Montville Township and, uh, for ten point seven one-two miles of township roads, including Burrows, Dewey, Hart, Hatula, Joanne, Kyle, Murphy, Sun and Whitney for the winter season of twenty-five, twenty-six. And Montville Township will pay for snow and ice control in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and eighteen cents. And, uh, item thirteen, snow and ice control between the commissioners, the engineer and Troy Township for control of eleven point eight-three miles, including Stafford, Fox, Winnegal, Patch, Nash, Tilden, Hoover, Grove and Greystone for the twenty-five, twenty-six season. And Troy Township would pay for that snow and ice control in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
I move to approve eleven, twelve and thirteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, the only thing I would say is on that, it, you know, what, what's interesting is, is I, as I kind of did a, a dive as far as our past conversation when it came to overtime. That amount right there, um, comes really close and close to covering almost the entirety of the engineers' overtime as far as what, what is the biggest portion of the snow plowing, you know? Which, you know, you just can't avoid it, especially coming off of what we did last year, you know, from January to, uh, to March. It was, so, so that's, it's, it's super appreciated, the fact that, you know, these numbers are coming in, you know, and, and really making a huge financial offset, you know, for the engineers' department to almost bring it to zero. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and the, the real benefit that we see is, um, the efficiency of maintaining, uh, for the townships that are maintaining our roads, they're driving across those roads to go between their individual township roads.
Right.
So their plows are already on the road. Um, it allows our crews to then kind of do the same. Uh, if we're driving past some of these township roads, our crews can go in and, and plow them. It makes it a little more efficient, a little less fuel, a little less time driving across the same roads. Um, hopefully, the quality of both the townships plowing and the counties plowing is satisfactory. You know, so we've found this to be a good, uh, compromise or, or collaboration between the county and the township.
Yeah, totally.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But on nine and ten, we have to pay out a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to Bainbridge.
Yep.
So.
Versus driving from here to there, yeah.
And every year at this time, we, we do this contract.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for eleven, twelve, thirteen?
Commissioner Spitaler.
I.
Commissioner Braking.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBarr.
Yes.
Thank you. And then items fourteen through sixteen are, are similar. I'll read them individually and then if you want to discuss them, we can. Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty-five dash two zero eight pointing Carolyn Braking, uh, as the chief executive officer and certifying representative for the proposed Bainbridge Road Bridge Structure BR zero zero eleven dash zero zero two one for the replacement of, in Bainbridge Township. And further to authorize the chief executive officer to execute State of Ohio Public Works Commission application for financial assistance. Item fifteen, Engineers' Office requesting resolution twenty-five dash two zero nine appointing Carolyn Braking as CEO and certifying representative for the Bascom Road Bridge Replacement BR zero zero six nine dash zero one zero one for the replacement in Hampton Township. And further to approve and authorize the CEO to execute the OPWC application. And finally, Engineers' Office requesting resolution twenty-five dash two one zero appointing Carolyn Braking as CEO, certifying representative for the asphalt resurfacing of Bass Lake Road, County Highway twenty-three, sections F and G in Munson Township. And further to authorize the CEO to execute the OPWC application.
So what does this mean for me? I just signed some papers.
It does. Um, so in past practice, this is, this is a step necessary for the state application. They require that the board, uh, that governs, whether it be the commissioners or the trustees, to certify- to certify an individual to act as the sole person with authority to enter the contract, to sign the project agreement in July, and to submit for distribution of payment. The Commissioners have required that each of those future steps come back here for action. This authorizes that individual to do it, but the Commissioners request that each of those future actions then come forward as another board action.
And OPWC is very important because they can fund forty to fifty percent of a road project.
Correct.
I'm going to put it on my resume. Royal CEO.
Yes.
All right. I move to approve items number fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Second. Any more discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brakey. Aye. Commissioner DeBar.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Hello.
How are you?
My name is Cindy Hay Cox-Falman. I'm the victim advocate for the Joga County Prosecutor's Office. I'm here to talk about number seventeen, but before I go with that, I just, as an employee of Joga County, I wanted to thank you all for making the decision last Tuesday to, for a late report. It's just nice to know that we're valued and our health and safety are thought of. And just personally, I appreciated that, and I just wanted to, I'm glad I had the opportunity to be here today to let you guys know that, so.
Thank you for the feedback. We appreciate that.
So, I'm here, I came in June, I believe, and asked for permission to apply for my Victim, Victims of Crime Act grant that programs across the state use. It's, funds are coming from the Department of Justice funnel through, or they're given to be dispersed by the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and then we apply for grants. So, this is money that partially funds the program that handles the victim notification for all of the felony level counts within the Court of Common Pleas and also all of the victims that are created through any juvenile complaints through the Joga County Juvenile Court. So, my grant was approved, so now I'm just coming before you to further authorize the funding of it.
So, I'll move to approve item number seventeen.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brakey. Aye. Commissioner DeBar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Have a good rest of the day.
You too.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I, oh, sorry. Number eighteen, my name's Crystal Thompson. I'm the Director for the Law Library, and I have with me Board Member Susan.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Leon. I'm a member of the Law Library Resources Board.
And the Law Library is requesting that the board approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-four thousand to offset the decrease in revenue and increase in the annual cost of Westlaw subscriptions for the Courts, Prosecutor's Office, and Public Defender's Office over the past ten years.
So, when you say you have a decrease in revenue, can you talk about what that means? Who is giving you less money and why?
Yeah, so, our funding comes from the municipal court, traffic fines and fees. And that was developed back in 2010. That's the way that all county law libraries are funded. And just looking at the revenue over the past ten years, you could see the decrease. For example, back in 2011, revenue for the year was a hundred forty-six thousand. 2014, it was a hundred twenty-five thousand. And just as we go on, it just decreases, a hundred thirteen thousand. Twenty-twenty was a hundred thousand a year. We'll occasionally have a year where we'll get around a hundred fifteen thousand, and that usually covers everything. But then, the following year, we'll get hit with a revenue of a hundred thousand. We've just continually pooled from our unencumbered funds, and now we're at the point where we've pulled almost everything. We've cut services. We haven't purchased any print resources, which are generally pretty expensive. We've focused on just Westlaw. And Westlaw will just continue to get expensive, get more expensive.
I saw, I mean, I saw that in the contracts. But I guess the one thing I was a little confused about is, I mean, you're coming to us now, but, I mean, you entered a three-year agreement, so you knew what your Westlaw costs were going to be. So, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, we knew that we had the unencumbered funds that we could use a little bit from each year if we needed to. And it was generally, you know, two thousand, three thousand, so it was nothing that was super impactful. And then, like I was saying, we will occasionally have a year where randomly it's a hundred twenty thousand, and then we're covered. So, it's just, it's hard to determine what our revenue will be each month, each year.
Yeah, and I mean, I calculated, your Westlaw subscription has gone up eighty-nine percent in nine years.
Right.
Which is, and I mean, I know, obviously, from my career as well, that there's basically two names in the game, and they kind of have their little monopoly on us. But have you looked at, and I know this is a hard thing, because people get set with Westlaw, and they know, and I'm a Westlaw person too. So, I know you get used to how that platform operates, but have you cost compared with Lexus?
I haven't cost compared recently. I'm sure things have changed over the past couple of years. But just talking with other county law libraries that are involved in our consortium, it seems like the general consensus is that people do prefer Westlaw. And it seems like the price of Lexus has also been increasing over the past few years, but that is definitely something I'm going to look into.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, you're going to get people yelling at you if you do that. But I do think it's worth that cost comparison, just to see
Oh, yeah.
where we're at. And I mean, that was the other thing I was going to ask, is like, what steps you've taken to try to attempt to decrease your costs, particularly when it comes to Westlaw? I mean, when I saw the old contracts, it mentioned like how many attorneys were on it, and that decreased from the one contract to the other. But then this last one, it didn't even say how many attorneys were on it for some reason. And it looks like you decreased perhaps like what modules you were using as well for the software. Is that correct?
Yeah, so each time we renew our contract, there are new features that they'll bundle together. And they'll look at, you know, features that we use a lot that we absolutely need to keep. And then there might be some things that maybe it was used once in the past couple of years, so they could take that out.
Yeah.
At one point, we had, we were allowed thirty attorney accounts. And then we cut that down to twenty-five at one point, just to try to save on that. Yeah, I mean, we, we're down to the bare bones of features for Westlaw, and I just feel like it's the one resource that we really, it's important to provide. I mean, everyone in the county uses it.
We've also decreased workstations too, right?
Yeah, that was for our patron accounts. We also have, had two computers in the Law Library for the public to use or attorneys, you know, bar members. And at one point, we did cut that down to just one workstation, and that did save us money for our patron account. Today, I'm just looking at our account that covers the rest of the county.
Okay, so that's a, that's a separate account?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Anyone else have any questions? I'll move to approve item number eighteen.
Second.
Any more discussion?
No, I mean, you guys are always, you know, so, so close on your budget, and it's just, you know, you do a good job as far as every, all the years I've been, you know, following you guys and doing stuff, it's, I understand, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brakey. Aye. Commissioner DeBar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Reba.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good, good.
Well, good morning. Jessica Bolt, Director, Joga County Department on Aging. I'm here this morning requesting the board approve and execute a resolution for Reba Dykes and honoring her for her dedication and her service to the Joga County Department on Aging. Reba's last day with us as our In-Home Services Manager was on Thursday. And last week was a busy week as all of our social services staff were wrapping up the Medicare season. It is officially over as of Friday. So, with last week being hectic, we, Reba was happy to come back to the county after her first day of retirement at home yesterday to come back. So, we definitely wanted to honor her for all of her service. She blessed us with her wealth of knowledge, helped so many seniors, transformed our agency, and made our department so much better with her knowledge and resources and patience, kindness, and compassion.
Thank you. I do just want to make a couple comments. And first of all, thank you for taking the time to do this and to honor me today. I appreciate that in many, many ways. I've been in the workforce probably over fifty years, most of that in the social service field. So, it's always been my goal in life to be able to serve the community in one capacity or another. I've been with the county just shy of ten years. But I have to say, it's been my most rewarding experience working for the county. I've had great privilege working under Director Bolt here. She has such strong leadership, and I've worked with a group of people with the Department on Aging that are so dedicated to the mission, serving the Joga County seniors and impacting them in positive ways. So, I truly appreciate that opportunity. I want to say that a while back, you appointed me as a voluntary board member to the Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services. My term is not up until June of 2027. I anticipate completing that obligation. It's a joy to serve on that board, and I'll always be looking for other ways to impact the community in which way I can and continue that. I also personally want to thank you, Commissioner Spudler. I appreciate your ongoing and unwavering support and confidence in me. It means a lot to me. And I have one last message. Santa Claus said he wanted to be here today but couldn't.
Okay.
But he will see you Thursday.
All right. Fair enough. No.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, this is a somber time, too. You've been just a huge part of, part of our Department on Aging and so many, so many of our seniors that you've made a positive impact, and their families. And it's just, I've heard it so many, many times, and just the stuff that you do, not only in this role, but just outside of here, your commitment and dedication to people, just to people, has just been, you know, just fascinating to always watch, and I respect you dearly, and, you know, and I, as soon as I heard, I stopped down that day because I was like, you got to be kidding me. We cannot lose Reba, and, but no, listen.
You'll see me in other, other spaces.
You know, I'm happy for you and to the next chapter in your life of being able to be with the grandkids and do the things that you want to do. So, congratulations, and God bless you always.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, well, let's approve it first.
Let's approve it first.
Have to approve.
And read the resolution. Do you want to read the resolution?
Sure. Sure, I want to read that.
Sure. Resolution honoring Reba Dykes for her dedicated service to Joga County and its residents. Whereas, Reba Kay Dykes began her service with the Joga County Department on Aging as a social worker on July seventeenth, 2026, and throughout her tenure has demonstrated exceptional capacity, professionalism, and commitment to older adults in the community. And whereas, Reba's leadership and strong work ethic led to her promotion to Social Services Coordinator on March twenty-fifth, 2017, and subsequently to In-Home Service Manager on August thirtieth, 2018. In each role, Reba has proven to be self-directed, motivated, resourceful, and consistently willing to go above and beyond in support of her team, especially when navigating complex client needs. And whereas, Reba as a supervisor is respected and appreciated by staff, providing hands-on leadership marked by empathy, steadiness, and professionalism in all she does. And whereas, in her role as In-Home Services Manager, Reba has been responsible for making some of the agency's most challenging and consequential decisions, guided by her experienced sound judgment and steadfast commitment to the well-being of clients and employees. And whereas, Reba's extensive knowledge, leadership abilities, and reliable presence have greatly benefited the Department on Aging, contributing substantially to the agency's success with dedication, integrity, and professionalism that have brought positive representation within the community. And whereas, Reba is deeply vested in the agency's mission and has consistently upheld the highest standards of service, leaving a lasting and meaningful legacy as she concludes her service with Joga County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Joga County Board of Commissioners honors Reba Kay Dykes for her dedicated service, tireless work ethic, and lasting contributions to Joga County and its residents, and extends its sincere best wishes to her as she moves on to her next chapter.
Thank you.
So, I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, extends.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler.
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Brakey. Aye. Commissioner DeBar.
Aye.
Thank you, Reba.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey. Good morning. How are you?
Excuse me. Brandon Reed, Emergency Management Agency. I've got two items before you this morning. The first one, Agenda Item Number Twenty. The EMA is requesting the board to approve and authorize our Director, Austin Rice, to execute a memorandum of understanding between Lake County, Ashubila County, and Joga County Emergency Management Agencies to allow alerting authorities to establish each other as backup alerting authorities to be able to issue emergency alerts, warnings, and notifications on each other's behalf in the unlikely event that the original alerting authority is not able to perform those functions. If there's any questions on this.
So, do the alerting authorities have a meeting? Is it called an AA meeting?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's a long agenda.
I will take one second to explain this just a little bit deeper, so the audience can understand this. So, the perinuclear power plant currently uses an outdoor warning system, a siren system, to alert the general public. What the power plant is looking to do is eventually eliminate these outdoor sirens because it's an antiquated, outdated technology that's very costly to repair and maintain. So, what this would be doing is shifting to FEMA's IPaaS Alerting System, which stands for Integrated Public Alert Warning System. Basically, everybody has cell phones now. So, these alerts would go out to cell phones that are in the area. So, where sirens only alert people that are within earshot of those sirens, this would notify a lot more people. So, this agreement is basically to authorize us to issue those alerts on each other's behalf.
That'd be similar to the Amber Alert.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So, I'll move to approve item number twenty.
Second. Any more discussion? Call for vote. Aye. Yes.
Thank you. And then the last one, Item Number Twenty-One. EMA is requesting the board to approve our revised update to the Joga County Radiological Emergency Response Plan, the RERP, and to allow us to execute that plan in the event of an emergency at the perinuclear power plant. We had to make some very minor changes to that plan. DES to EMA, DES Director to EMA Director. We had to change the name of Joga Regional Hospital in that plan. And more importantly, we had to remove a software that we used to use in that plan called Stormchaser. We no longer use that, so that had to be removed.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Brakey. Aye. Commissioner DeBar.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Brandon. Hi, Craig.
Morning, everyone. Craig Swenson, on behalf of Joga County Job and Family Services. So, I'm just asking that the board approve and execute our memorandum that we have with the state and the Department of Children and Youth. Um, it's our memorandum to address child abuse and neglect in accordance with ORC twenty-one fifty-one four-two-one. Um, it's a me- a memo, just so, I know you guys are aware, but Commissioner Braking, the first time, you've probably seen it. And then, I know you read everything, but.
I read it.
There's a lot, um, a lot of, a lot of stuff in there, but really, um, again, it's just kind of a uniform way. So the state can oversee the counties and, and kind of have a uniform way, um, and have all the major parties that are involved with child abuse and neglect agree to certain standards.
So the form comes from the state, Craig? Yeah, I figured. It looked boilerplate.
Yeah, we, we can, there's certain parts that are, I think that you'll see that are dark.
You check or uncheck.
And that are bold.
Okay.
That we're allowed to switch around the language. Like, for example, every, not every county has a child abuse, you know, CAC, Child Advocacy Center, like, but we do, so we add in language there that talks about that. Um, where we work in conjunction, you know, obviously with the prosecutor's office with respect to that. But we get signatories from every single county law enforcement, um, department, um, the prosecutor's office, the courts, and obviously you guys, since you oversee us. Um, but, and, and again, it's every two years.
Um, I'll move to approve twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitalar. Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Thank you, Craig.
Of course. Thank you.
Good morning.
Charles Teecatch, the Maintenance Department. Um, I have one item on the agenda, Item Number Twenty-three. Uh, the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve termination of the Professional Services Agreement, uh, with CT Consultants Incorporated slash Verdantis Architecture Incorporated for the Georgia County Courthouse Annex Basement Remodeling Project effective immediately, and further authorize processing the final invoice and settle all outstanding financial obligations with the firm as specified in the contract's termination clause, not to exceed nine thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents, and to transfer the remaining project funds accordingly in the amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents.
So that, that ninety-five hundred dollars, is that due for work that was performed or is that a result of an early termination fee?
That is work that was performed.
Okay, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah, there was no termination.
Okay, very good. Um, I move to approve twenty-three.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, so this, this project's on hold, uh, as, as far as I know. What was the estimated project? If it would, if we would have went, went through?
The estimated project was, uh, with the first change order that was approved was forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And we spent, uh, the final invoice here will total nineteen thousand eight dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Okay. Uh, call for a vote.
Commissioner Spitalar.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, Rick, what the Georgia County Maintenance Department? We, uh, we are, the department is requesting to approve the, uh, authorize the President of Board to, to evac. Sorry. Ask, that's some stuff stuck in there. The Declaration of Restr- Restrictive Covenant for the Inspection and Maintenance by the Georgia County Maintenance Department for Stormwater Dry Pond Maintenance by the Georgia County Office Building located in Clarendon Township, uh, for the benefit of the Georgia Soil and Water, uh, Conservation District.
I feel like a dry pond is a bit of a oxymoron, is it not?
Yes, but they are supposed to be dry.
Yeah, I, I had to Google it. I didn't know what it was.
Yes.
I, I learned. Um, so that, in the covenant, there's a maintenance component to that. I assume that's something your department will handle.
Yeah, so we need to, it's like you have to check the embankments, you know, no trash, floating debris, no brush, um, no obstructions for the inlets or outlets. Um, and we are, yes, we are performing that and you can actually see that right over the hill here, so.
Um, so I'll move to approve twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitalar.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good seeing you.
Nick Gores, uh, Water Resources. First item from us on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement between the Board of County Commissioners, the Georgia County Department of Water Resources employees, uh, and the Local Forty-three Forty Communication Workers of America for the period of January first, twenty twenty-six, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. This is our union contract.
Um, for, for people in the audience that, you know, aren't aware of this, can you talk about how your revenue works? And like, what do enterprise fund this and so forth?
So, uh, the Department of Water Resources being under, still under the Commissioners' hiring authority, we are what's considered an enterprise organization, enterprise fund. Our department is funded by the revenues we bring in from, uh, bi-monthly sewer and water bills, um, by work that is, uh, the lab performs testing for the different outside for public, general public who are testing their wells, uh, people who have NPDS permitted wastewater treatment plants at individual businesses. So the revenue is coming from that, also from our inspection fees, uh, when we are doing a sewer install, connection fees, uh, tap-in fees. So in short, being an enterprise, uh, we are one, I would say ninety-nine percent, you know, uh, funded, self-funded. So we're a self-funded organization. Is there a percent or two that's going to come in from grants? Yes. Do we get the perks of being a government agency? Yes. Do we pay part into a cost allocation back to the Commissioners? Yes. You know, so, uh, Water Resources is self-funded. We do our own maintenance on our own buildings. We pay for all the, excuse me, all the improvements to our wastewater treatment plants. Very similar to the, uh, McFarland Wastewater Plant that's going on right now, that thirty-one million dollar project that will be paid back through, uh, either grants that we've received, um, and the loans will be paid through, through our revenue, our capital improvement funds, um, from that nature. So, uh, an organization that we are prided, we do our best to, uh, you know, uh, keep, make sure we have our emergencies, so when things do hop up, we have that. But again, self-funded all the way through. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think, I think that's helpful for, for people to know that aren't aware. Um, I'll move to approve twenty-five.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitalar.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the, uh, uh, the team will very much appreciate that, so.
Yeah, I know you guys worked hard on getting it there. I appreciate it. All the typos you got out of the document.
There's probably some few more in there that, that's antiquated.
Give me another die. I'll, I'll show them to you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a subaward agreement between, uh, Noaka and the Georgia County, uh, for Water Resources for the U.S. EPA Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars. As a reminder, uh, Noaka was awarded a, a U.S. EPA grant to, uh, perform climate produc- pollution reduction investigation. Uh, the portion that would be allocated to or was offered to Water Resources was based on a percentage. Our number was twenty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars. It's free money. Um, it's a reimbursement grant. Uh, the Department of Water Resources, we were going to use this. We were going to perform this task anyways of looking at alternative energy sources for twenty-four hour operating facilities. So, um, we're, in theory, one of the things we're looking at is potentially a solar, alternative, other types of alternative energy, non-storage, because we're using the power as fast as we, you know, as we can generate it. Uh, we're be, we'd be looking to go back. We're going to extend this to any twenty-four operations, um, that the county has as we're looking at the study, because what we find, it's going to depend on real estate, it's going to depend on, um, the usage facilities and where we're located. But we were going to spend the money anyways. Um, so it's a reimbursement that, um, I can go back to our account holders and say, I didn't spend thirty thousand dollars looking at something and, you know, we're getting our money out of it, so.
Um, did your, your APA reviewed this? Okay. The only thing I wasn't comfortable about is there is a termination for convenience language in the agreement where Noaka can just say, no, thanks, you guys. And that, and, and particularly what concerns me about that is that it is a reimbursement grant. So then we would be on the hook. So, I mean, they could basically cancel that grant for any reason or no reason. And then we're on the hook for, for the, you know, essentially thirty grand.
Correct. And again, it's, uh, something that we were looking into anyways. Uh, it's going to benefit us in the long run. Um, I'm not, I don't anticipate, uh, this being, uh, terminated for any reason.
I wouldn't either, but.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars. It's not like I'm going to get a, my study's probably going to end up costing us more than this in the long run anyways, but at least this will help, uh, offset the costs.
And when you say alternative energy, I mean, are you thinking like anything's on the table?
Anything's, yeah.
Power.
Right.
You're saying not battery storage.
Not battery. We don't, I, that's a, a long-term maintenance problem. Uh, batteries go bad, correct? So we're looking at more, uh, create it, use it, you know?
That's the thing about an electron. You gotta use it as soon as you make it.
So.
Um, okay, so I'll move to approve. I, I don't even know where we are.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Okay, I have numbered twenty-six.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Yes.
Uh, the next item we have, uh, as discussed when we presented this originally, uh, is an amended, uh, twenty-twenty-five certification list of delinquent sewer user fees, water fees, tap-in installments, and subsequent certification to the Georgia County Auditor in accordance with ORC six-one-one-seven point zero-two and the Georgia County Department Rules and Regulations, Section F point five-zero-one, in a total amount of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and forty cents. Uh, four hundred and thirty-five sixty-eight forty-four is actually amounts owed. Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty and ninety-six is the penalties. Um, this is current as of seven-thirty AM, December second. So basically between the time that I presented to you for the first time and we actually got the forms ready to go, another one electronically, and this is one of those, uh, issues with, you know, bank drafts, uh, for, on our side of certification. So we have set this date, locked it in. Anybody after that will be communicating with them to either have a, um, a credit on their account for a very long time. If they are in the rears of over a thousand dollars, most of these are, um, or, uh, will coordinate to return their payment so that it is paid through the auditors and the treasurers with the taxes.
Do you have to do these right before Christmas?
Well, we have a timeline. Our rules and regs are, are, one, specify when we do this. Um, and we only currently do it once a year. Uh, my plan for twenty-six is to be coming to you to do this twice a year so that we don't miss when properties transfer between new owners. Um, so we'll be able to capture, um, that. And hopefully by that time, it'll be a quarter of what it is. I have a goal to hopefully eliminate this. We've done really good with, uh, on the water side where we can actually do shut-offs, which is allowed by the rules and regulations. The last go-around, we sent out sixty-seven letters for shut-off notices. Uh, we shut off, everybody paid, so zero. One happened to be the moment we were standing right on top of this, their curb stop to shut it off. But, um, uh, everybody is on that water side, you know, so that procedure, that was part of the rules and regs. Implementing it as it's written, it hadn't been done in the department for a while, but implementing that piece of it has been a success. So we're, the money is coming in, the revenues we're due, um, are coming in because of that.
Um, I move to approve twenty-seven.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to sign this here?
Yes.
Okay, just sign under Commissioner DeWort's name?
All of you across the, the thing.
Yeah. We have squeeze, okay. Got it.
They only gave me one line, but it has all of you, so.
I haven't seen that before. Big challenge.
Every once in a while we get a strange one like that.
I have Items Twenty-eight and Twenty-nine. So Twenty-eight, the Commissioners' Office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, increasing the contract with APG Office Furnishings for power and AV connection boxes and cabling into the conference room tables, including installation and shipping in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-six cents for a new not-to-exceed amount of five hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents. And new furniture installation is slated to begin tomorrow.
Do we know why this, um, wasn't anticipated, needing these power and connection boxes?
No.
Yeah, I figured. Um, are we anticipating any additional change orders?
No.
After. You should be priding yourself some kind of, okay. Um, I move to approve twenty-eight.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitalar.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Twenty-nine, the Commissioners' Office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number two, decreasing the contract with APG Office Furnishings for the removal of high-density shelving and installation for the Clerk of Courts in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents for a new not-to-exceed amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, and extending the length of the contract by one month through January first, twenty twenty-six.
I move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spitalar.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm going to present the twenty-twenty-six, uh, permanent appropriations budget. So this is the, uh, budget that will go into effect, uh, as of January first of, uh, next year. And, um, this obviously is the, uh, really the, the final step in, uh, establishing the, the twenty-twenty-six budget. Want to thank the Commissioners, um, all the department heads and fiscal people on the Auditor's Office, um, as well as, uh, Amy, uh, County Administrator, Mark W. County Administrator, and, uh, I'm Adrian Gordon, the Budget and Finance Manager. So without further ado, I will go ahead and get into, uh, this first slide here. Hopefully that comes up everywhere, okay? So, um, in August, uh, every year, uh, following the submission of the Commissioners' Tax Budget, the Budget Commission certifies the revenue, uh, for the following year and appropriations by fund, which is, um, how we have, uh, divvied up that money. Um, by fund cannot exceed certified revenues for that fund. So I know that there were some things that went around that we were spending more than what our revenue was and that's because what was ignored in that was the beginning balance. So you can see the Budget Commission certifies the revenue expected to be received for the year along with the unencumbered fund balance identified at the beginning of the year. So you have your revenues plus the beginning balances, which equal the total resources. So we budget, uh, based off of those total resources. The County Commissioners appropriate funds to county departments, the total amount of those corporations, as I said, cannot exceed the certified amount of the resources as determined by the Budget Commission. We cannot have a negative, uh, fund balance at the beginning of, uh, any given year. So for twenty-twenty-six, the permanent appropriations, the Budget Commission certified fifty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and four hundred, fifty-four thousand, fifty-four million, fifty-four million four hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars of resources for the general fund. The minimum carryover is expected to be a lot higher, um, than that six-point-six million, six-point-seven million. Um, it's probably going to be closer to, to fifteen million or more uh, due to some unbudgeted revenues and unused appropriations being returned to the general fund. Unfortunately, this is, uh, just the way the county's financial system works. Um, I, I can't make that, uh, beginning balance any different, uh, it, because this is the hard, fast number that is produced by the financial system. Um, the beginning balances are based on the current year's ending balance and there are unused appropriations as of yesterday that were over our budget revenues, uh, um, unused appropriations. And as of yesterday, we are over our budget revenues by about two-point-three million dollars. That's about five hundred thousand in property tax, three hundred thousand in transfers in, because we, we closed the fund this year. Um, there's four hundred thousand more in prisoner housing than what we budgeted for, and actually a million more in interest. And we still have about three weeks left in the year. There were some modest increases, um, in the, the revenue budget for next year, um, including about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in sales tax. in sales tax, um, property tax revenue was increased about eighty-six thousand, forty thousand, uh, was an increase in estate reimbursement for real estate, there's about thirty-five thousand more in clerk of court fees, fifty-five thousand in refunds and reimbursements, thirteen thousand in the sheriff web shop dues, and a hundred thousand cost allocation. There was only one budget revenue decrease, and that was in the inmate consideration reimbursement, it was about a dollar. So, that beginning balance plus twenty-twenty-six revenues, uh, give us the total resources of the fifty-four million, four-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. So, this is a little, um, graph breakdown on the twenty-twenty-six, uh, funds by, uh, source. So, the twenty-twenty-six general fund revenue, as I said, um, was estimated at, uh, yes, okay, was estimated at forty-seven-point-eight million, um, the majority of that, the twenty-one-point-seven-five million, which is just a little under, uh, half of our revenue, forty-five-point-five percent, is estimated to come from sales tax. This is that one percent of the county portion of the total, uh, county sales taxes, six-point-seven-five percent, um, that is paid in Jog County, the state of Ohio charges five-point-seven-five. The average rate in the state of Ohio is seven-point-three percent right now, Ohio law allows counties, as of this moment, uh, to option up to two and a quarter percent on top of the, the state's five-point-seven-five, making the, the maximum eight percent. Uh, the next one, uh, just under, uh, a quarter of our revenue, um, is eleven-point-five million. Uh, this is from the two-and-a-half mils of the county general fund portion of the real estate taxes paid. So, this is two-point-five mils of your, um, your, uh, property taxes. So, the next one is interest income, this remains at three million dollars, although, as I mentioned, we budgeted three million this year, so we're over four million dollars right now in, in interest revenues, simply because of the, the interest rates are so high, and, and we're getting so much more money on our, the money that we have in the bank. But this is gonna remain at three million for next year, which is a little over six percent of our income currently. Other revenue is at, uh, two-point-four-five million or five percent of the revenue budget for next year. This is made up of several items, including rents, gas well proceeds, insurance, and other reimbursements, miscellaneous grants, and county auction proceeds. The property transfer tax is four-point-seven percent of our budget, or two and a quarter million. These are the fees paid when the property transfers to a new owner. Uh, department fees and fines are estimated at about four-point-four percent, or two-point-one million for next year. Including these fees are those charged by the auditor, the building department, the courts, the recorder, treasurer, uh, board of elections, and this is for services they provide to residents. The casino tax is the tax on the gross earnings of a casino, fifty-one percent of the casino tax is set aside for counties, and the amount received is allocated to the counties based on population. For twenty-twenty-six, this is gonna be estimated at one-point-five million dollars. Prisoner housing is the revenue generated from housing inmates at the county jail from other areas. It is again being budgeted for next year at one-point-five million, we are over that amount as well for this year. Cost allocation is the charge back to county departments outside the general fund for services provided by the general fund. And the local government tax is a revenue sharing tax that comes back to the counties from the state. Okay, so as far as, uh, as far as, uh, appropriations, this is the expenses. So, the overall budget for twenty-twenty-six is a hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-four million, this includes the general fund at just one-point-three million. The total of a hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-four is a one-point-three million dollar increase from the tax budget, due mostly to a reduction in the building improvements fund. Uh, the reduction was made necessary due to the number of projects that received approval this year, which reduced the available resources previously budgeted going into next year. The general fund permanent appropriations are submitted at the fifty-one-point-three million. This is an increase of about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand compared to the tax budget. The increase was a result of, uh, balancing out the capital transfers out account to coincide with the amounts that were approved during the tax budget, for the airport, which was the, the twenty-five thousand that we commit to fund them every year, um, the building improvements fund of one-point-five million, and the computer equipment improvements fund at eight-hundred thousand. All the requests that were submitted were fully funded, there are no items waiting for funding. There's no delayed funding requests in the budget for next year. So, this is a little pie chart breakdown, um, of the twenty-twenty-six general fund operating expenses. Those pie charts shows, uh, um, about those expenses by category. The numbers shown are net of the commissioners' transfer out accounts, which total about six-point-four million, and those support various departments outside the general fund, including nine-one-one, eight-hundred communications, court technology, debt service, capital transfers, and grant matches. The chart shows the split of the general fund spending, as I mentioned, less of those operating transfers out. Forty percent of the budget goes to public safety, uh, which includes the sheriff, coroner, and the building department. That's about eighteen million dollars. Uh, thirty-seven-point-four of the budget goes to legislative and executive, which is the other elected officials, including the auditor, treasurer, prosecutor, commissioners, recorder, as well as the board of elections, A D P, planning and maintenance, and that is about sixteen-point-eight million. Judicial makes up about fifteen-point-four percent of the budget, includes the courts and the public defender. The remaining categories are fairly small, uh, this includes conservation and recreation, which is the O S U extension in soil and water, which is one-point-four percent of the budget. Human services is the Veteran's Service Commission, that is one-point-six percent of the budget. Health is the Bureau for Children of Med, with medical hand, handicaps requirement, and that is that the county fund a point-one mil to treat handicap children in the county. Historically, we have not spent the maximum that we've had to spend for the, the Bureau, um, for children with medical handicaps. I do not budget at the one, the point-one mil, um, but we are obligated to fund that amount if the need arises. Since I've been with the county, we have not come close to that point-one mil, so I continue to, to budget that lower than, than what is actually required. Uh, major miscellaneous, um, items in the budget include the Jubilee detention centers, which we pay, uh, Lake and Richland County, um, set aside forty-eight thousand for that, um, the, uh, youth center funding, which is four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, annual insurance liability, which is five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, postage, which is two-hundred, uh, legal fees, including appointed counsel is a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and the Court of Appeals, which is fifty-four thousand. So, this is a little look at the, um, the, uh, appropriations and, uh, what we'll be doing, uh, potentially with the, uh, um, appropriations process after the beginning of the year. So, as I said, um, and this is still probably gonna be a low estimate, um, estimating the cash balance on January first to be the fifteen million dollars, is our intention to transfer five million out of the general fund and into the building improvement fund, um, we are estimating our carryover encumbrances at about two-point-five million, leaving a twelve-point-five million unencumbered balance. The certified revenue for twenty-twenty-six, as I mentioned, is forty-seven-point-eight million. Less appropriations of fifty-one-point-three leaves nine million for the building improvements projects and other unbudgeted requests. The commissioners will evaluate current and future projects in order to determine the best use for the remaining unappropriated balance. And as I mentioned early, earlier, there are no pending requests, um, in the general fund, um, so, uh, we, we're not, uh, we did not have to delay any funding due to the, um, balance, uh, the unappropriated balance in the general fund. Previous years, I have looked at, you know, anywhere from two to three million in an unappropriated balance in the general fund, um, which, when you, you have requests over the calendar year revenue, that, you know, total, you know, anywhere from three to five million, um, I would have to trim those in order to, to make sure the, the budget was balanced. With a almost six-point-seven million-dollar unappropriated balance going in to twenty-twenty-five and, and the budget process for twenty-twenty-six, I did not need to do that, uh, the, the requests, um, over the calendar year revenue were low enough to be absorbed by that, uh, that unappropriated balance in the general fund, which is expected to, to, uh, you know, uh, carry over in a, in a sufficient amount to cover everything. So, um, the general fund will continue to try and complete, um, all the various projects that we have without issuing any additional debt. We've done, uh, this building, we've done the courthouse, uh, we've done a lot of our projects, uh, with, uh, without issuing, uh, besides this building, issuing any additional debt or raising taxes. So, um, we want to try and do, um, all the projects that we have planned without having to, to go out and acquire additional debt or raise any taxes, so. Obviously, depending on what happens next year with, uh, with property taxes, you know, there, there may be some things that, uh, we need to look at in order to, um, make up the revenue. Um, so, uh, we are continuing to evaluate the county's overall footprint regarding properties and buildings. Uh, we continue to take a cautious, cautious approach to the status of, of property taxes and, uh, alternatives to the property taxes, and, uh, balancing needs and wants to maximize this, uh, benefits to residents. With that, that concludes, uh, the presentation, so, um, I'll open it up to questions first from the commissioners, and then we can open it up to the, the audience, so are there any questions from any of you?
I have no questions, good report, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the twelve million transfer, or twelve million, five million transfer from the buil, or to the building improvement fund?
Yes.
Um, what sort of projects are we looking at in the horizon for that money?
That is, uh, the, uh, several roofs, so the, the roof at the, um, the safety center is estimated to be about three-point-six million. Um, I believe the roof up at the annex was close to a million, probably about eight-hundred, eight-ho, you know, between eight-hundred and nine-hundred thousand, um, and then there, uh, off the top of my head, I can't think of anything else right at the moment, but there, um, there are a few different, there are a few other projects that are a little bit lower valued, so, but.
Safety center parking lot.
That one is currently ongoing, yeah, and we have, um, we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant too that we got for that one, so hopefully that one will be, um, completed, uh, here soon, so.
What about the expansion of this parking lot?
That was not, there, there's no dollar figures or anything attached to any of that, so, yeah. Any questions?
Um, you know, I, I have, I, I just, I guess, just clarify, you know, for the audience a little bit, on that hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, or, uh, one, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven million comparatively to, to the, uh, general fund budget, just to, just to have like the, explain the difference of those two numbers for a little bit of clarity.
Well, so the, the general fund is the fund that operates all the core aspects of government, including our office and all the, uh, elected officials, so, um, now, part of that hundred-and-sixty-seven million is the fifty-one, you know, million for the, the general fund as well. Those are all the funds that are outside the general fund.
Right.
So, um, that would be like, uh, the funds that operate J F S, um, the health department, um, the, um,
D D.
What's that?
Developmental disabilities.
Correct, mental health, all those. Yeah, all of the, the different departments that are, are not inside the general fund, represented by the prosecutor's office, the building department, you know, all those, um, departments, so, um, some of those funds, as I mentioned in the budget presentation, receive money from the, uh, from the general fund, um, including nine-one-one, uh, the eight-hundred megahertz, uh, um, infrastructure fund, um, so, the computer equipment improvements fund, community development, uh, receives some funds from the general fund as well, so. But that, that's what that is, so, the hundred-and-sixty-seven includes the general fund, and the, um, the amount over and above that represents all the other various funds outside the core government fund of the, of the general fund, so.
And I think the other thing that always after these meetings, you know, people, um, always ask the question is, is the, the whole sales tax portion of it, because I think people really believe they go and buy a, um, you know, something at the store, they buy a new shirt, and, and that, you know, six-point-seven-five percent is coming to us, it's not, you know, and then that one percent that actually comes to us makes up almost forty-one, I believe, forty-one or forty-two percent of our total budget, and the rest of it gets sent down to the state, you know, so, um, you know, upwards to what? Is that almost like five percent or so, five, five and a quarter percent?
Five and three quarters.
Yeah, and, um, so.
Yeah, we make, uh, we make twenty-one million dollars.
Yeah.
Plus off of that, just that one percent.
Right.
So.
You know, so when people are always saying, how, you know, how do, how do you survive without property taxes? My answer is, look at, look at what we're sending down to Columbus, and how much of our property, uh, how much of our sales tax money that we're raising, we're raising, you know, twenty, you know, twenty-one million dollars on one percent. If you, if they gave us two more percent of that, instead of all the programs that are probably affecting all these other areas of the state, not really affecting Jog County, where could we really be? We would be able to eliminate property tax as far as that, that portion of it, you know, because you'd have it. But instead, I think that people truly need to get, you know, to, to, to take a, take a, a, a grab of what we're sending down to Columbus, you know, over that, over five percent, that what could it do for us, and let us control our own money? And, and, and I know that Dave, you've said this for years, as, as county administrator, and, and involved in all the different, you know, budget hearings and stuff, that where could we be if we could control our own money? But yet, you know, big brother, uh, state of Ohio is in, in our pocket taking that, and it.
No, that's right.
And it's terrible, it's terrible, and we could do a lot better job here managing our own money than, you know, worrying about being the, uh, um, you know, the, the, the guardian of all the other counties that are not responsible, you know, so, um, so, yeah.
I, I totally agree, and so Commissioner Doric and I were just at the C C I winter conference, and we heard from some of the state legislators, and let me tell you, they have no interest in giving counties any more money. Um, they have a lot of solutions for how to lower property taxes, but just at the, at, at our, on our back, right? They don't have any solution for how to make up this money, and it was pretty disheartening to see, because, I mean, you wanna talk about an inflated budget, I mean, we, sure, there's probably fat we could trim here and there, but, um, nothing compared to what happens at the state.
Yeah.
And at least the legislators we heard from, I was kind of disheartened by how much they wanna keep county money and not distribute it at all, e- even if property taxes are eliminated, it seems like.
And the fat that I saw, you know, and, and I, I'll, I'll be totally honest with you, I, I, I went to those meetings, and I promised myself would not put myself through it, because it, it was just so disheartening to leave out of there, to see how, how the state is on one agenda, and that's what they're gonna do, and they're gonna basically control it all the time, and, and, and take local control completely out of the mix, and, you know, the, it, it was just, it, it's difficult to watch too, and like you said, with the, with, with cutting the fat, they have committee after committee after committee, people hi, placements of jobs, I mean, it's just, it's, it's outrageous to watch what kind of spending is on the state side of things that we would be upside down here.
Well, and then what do they keep doing, they keep passing laws that are unfunded mandates on counties and our departments.
Right.
Right, they, they keep. They, they keep wanting us to jump through more hoops, more red tape, and then they don't fund us at all to, to have to do that. I mean, that's part, a big part of the reason I think why, um, government keeps getting bigger and bigger is they just keep passing more laws, more laws, more laws.
Yeah, it's tough, uh, tough scenario.
The sales tax alone, Jogga County sent it to the state over a hundred and ten million dollars annually.
Yeah. You know, and then the other part of it too is our townships are struggling all the time because they, they cut the local government funds. You know, be, and then, then when the, the whole casino idea came into play, they thought this was gonna be the save all to end all. And that didn't work out too good. So, it's like, you know, our, our townships are, are constantly in a, in a, in a struggle position to be able to, to have dollars to, to run their services, their, you know, their, their plowing services, their, 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 their roads, their fire, fire department. It's terrible and I, I just, I don't, there's gotta be a reset, you know, and I, 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 I just, um, it's gotta happen. Something can't continue to go down this road. We're doing the same thing today because we did it yesterday and we're gonna do it tomorrow because we did it today. And that does not work, does not work. So, gotta figure something out and just, and I appreciate people pushing back and I think that people are finally having enough and saying, saying we need to, need to do something and, and calling people out, so. But Adrian, on that too, you know, I, I gotta tell you, you know, I spent a lot of time with you, you know, over the last few weeks and Friday we spent a lot of time. You do a phenomenal job. Amy, it's amazing how fast you've come up to speed on so much of this and, and truly where your hearts are, both of your hearts are with, with the, with the county's interest and with the people's interest, you know, and, and, and neither of the two of you are afraid to ask the hard question and stand up. And I, I respect, I respect the heck out of both of you tremendously. And Mark, same thing, you know, you're doing a great job and, you know, appreciate you having you guys on the team and, and we, we do, we have a great, we have a great county. You know, Sheriff, last night him and I went to a dinner and we, 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 you know, Sheriff made a good comment to say, we've got a, a county that is, is far above, uh, anyplace else i- in the, in the state of Ohio, possibly in the country. Because we, we come together when people are in need. And, and, and it's like, and I'm humbled to be able to be in this position to try to do this. And sometimes I don't wanna be the, the, the bad guy to ask bad question or hard questions, but sometimes enough is enough. And, but I, 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 I appreciate what you said last night, Sheriff. It meant a lot to, to, to hear it coming from your heart. And I, I agree with you a thousand percent that we're, we live in a special place and we got great people like this, you know, yourself and your, your deputies and, you know, jobs and family services, departmental agent, you know, like losing Reba this morning, a big, big loss. But across the board, we've, we've had just so many, so many fortunate, um, people to be able to, to be here and pass people like Dave Lair, you know, who always, always was, was there for us too. And, you know, so at the end of the day, I, I appreciate what you guys are doing and, um, and I thank you for your accuracy and, and your willingness to, uh, to put it all out there. Thank you.
Assuming I can open it up for questions. Okay. Are there any questions? Dave?
I just have one quick question. On the, you mentioned that you do have debt on this building.
Correct, yes.
And those are the things we were always, during my time, I was both commissioners, basically, you pay down the debt quickly. And we built the safety center for fifty million dollars. We didn't do it in a thirty-year mortgage. We rolled the debt every year, refinanced it, the rates were going down, we were lucky there. We saved a ton of money. We paid off what, nine years, eight years, something like that? So, what's the, what's the outstanding debt on this building and what's the current financing setup and what's the plan to get rid of that debt?
We were about, uh, we're just about, uh, five years into the, uh, the twenty-year loans on those.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, they were, we were talking like two percent, you know, and, and lower loans.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, as we were looking at getting to build a fund to pay down the debt, um, we realized that, um, we're, we're making more on our money in the bank than technically we would be making paying off the debt.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
So, um, as of right now, we're probably gonna let that first five-year call slide.
So, you're lowering it down to two percent, so you're still a little.
Correct, yes. Yeah, so, uh, we'll continue to monitor the, the interest rates and see. You know, uh, Subsina and Associates came in here and talked with us, uh, a few weeks back and reiterated to us that we're in the best position possible right now. So, they're helping us watch those interest rates and would be able to determine if, if and when we might find a benefit in paying some of this off early and starting to roll it into some other instrument.
Great, thank you.
To pay it off. So, but as of right now, we're just letting that ride, um, so. Yes, sir.
My name is Phil Malensek. I live in Frey Township. And I've got a question on items nine through thirteen for the road service.
Um, we can, we can, sir, we can do that at the end. We do have a public comment period coming up and you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, I think this is for, maybe for the.
This budget.
Um, I'm gonna reiterate, first of all, I've been in this for a number of years. I mean, you do the fantastic job here very fortunately in Jogga County. But, um, in the presentation you made in the summertime, you showed a slide that had spenders receiving the credit. And the revenue has increased from about ninety million to about a hundred and forty. That's a huge increase in profits in that period of time. So, my logic would say, well, that's great. We shouldn't be either lack of cash and give the cash back. And, but it looks like if you're trying just to go out and spend that money, that revenue, you know, either through hiring more people or increasing salaries, possibly, um, and then helping out everybody, whatever, you have to pay. Or Russian to spend that money, well, we could just pay it off the building theoretically. So, can you comment on that? What are we doing with this special name? And what are we giving back to people? We don't need to spend it all. We're collecting, you know, uh, sales tax that's in, in excess of what we need. We need to do what we need to do. We don't wanna grow government bigger than we need to. And so what is your vision? You see all this stuff.
Over, over the last couple of years, we have reduced, uh, certain, uh, levies in order to, to kinda compensate, to give some money back. Um, through that process that those funds are directly made up through the general fund, um, transferring money. Uh, it's, I don't know if, uh, I don't think he's in here yet. Um, JFS has been the, the main one that we've, um, been reducing. Um, just this year, we reduced the, uh, collection on one of the JFS levies by a million dollars. So, I transferred a million dollars from the general fund into JFS in order to make up that difference. The previous year, I believe it was two point four million that we've reduced. So, we are kicking stuff to try and, um, lower, uh, the tax burden on the revenues through, um, things like this. Now, for twenty twenty-six, there's not troubling anything on the books for, for a reduction. Um, I think that, uh, there is an abundance of caution, uh, going on, um, in, in the county because of the, uh, pending, um, elimination of the property taxes. So, I think we're trying to, uh, uh, leave things the way that they are in, in an effort to, uh, build up those levy funds a little bit to, um, weather any sort of, um, decrease that may happen as a result of this. So, we have time to react and, and, uh, determine an action plan that, that some of those departments that are, uh, supported by levies.
You, you're not really getting to the heart of the question. The heart of the question is the fifty million dollars. We just consume it, of course. And so, uh, it, it looks like irresponsible behavior because we're creating permanent liability. We're hiring more people, we're giving bigger raises. And so, we're creating a permanent liability. We're good today. We're flush with cash because our sales tax is gone. In a bad time, that sales tax drops.
Some of that, some of that is the result too of, uh, the building projects as well that we had. So, um, we've had to budget for and set aside money in order to, to build this building. Uh, this building was, um, the debt that we took on to build this building was a lot less because we had been setting aside a certain amount of debt from the general fund, millions of dollars in order to keep the debt as low as possible. Um, we, uh, funded the, uh, the courthouse construction, uh, in no small part to the ten million dollars that we were returning out of the general fund, the courthouse construction fund due to ARPA. And the, uh, payroll obligations of the general fund being shifted, um, out to ARPA for, for last year.
Yeah.
Um, so those, all those numbers are trying to make.
Do you get personal days to add up to that rate?
You're, you're saying that it went up, so, I mean, there, there are some construction projects that are part of that. So, it's not all just, you know, um, pay raises and, and things like that.
Can you explain the difference between BOCC and, uh, general funds? Because you s- you see two commissioner terms. The generality is probably as much as that.
I apologize for going off on them, but I just can't.
Can you rephrase that?
There's a BOCC fund, Board of County Commissioners. I mean, there's the general fund. And so the monies are different, right?
Um, well, the, the commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners are within the general fund. So, we do have other funds outside the general fund, like the building improvements fund and then different, different things like that. Um, the courthouse construction fund, um, we have debt retirement funds as well we do, so, I'm not sure what, what, uh, the majority of our operations are, you know, included within the general fund, so.
That's two twenty, twenty twenty-five.
See, you mentioned the, you know, that you're working to build up balances in some of these funds to kinda weather the storm should there be a major change in the property, which is great. Certainly, that's the kind of actions we would have been taking. But will the current budget commission let you do that? Or are they gonna cut, cut your safety net off the month to you by saying, no, you can't, we won't carry over this much?
Well, the only, the only, and then I understand that concern and, and it, it is real because, I mean, uh, some recent legislation has given them a lot more power to do that. Um, but this was, the decision to not, um, reduce any levies was, uh, uh, partially their decision as well. So, they're the ones that, um, initiated some of these other, uh, reductions. And they opted, um, to allow the budget to go forward without any reductions.
Because that was always a concern, right? First came in, we had a mentality of, well, we gotta spend our budget, otherwise they'll cut our budget next year. We said, no. Don't spend money on frivolous things just to get up your carryover down to some arbitrary number.
Exactly, yeah.
If you happen to have a little more comfortable balance, good for you. We're not gonna penalize you for that. Now, if it keeps happening year after year, then you have to do so.
Right.
But you don't punish good behavior physically, it's possible.
Yeah, and there, there are a lot of, uh, in an effort to wisely spend, uh, the resources that we have, there are a number of, uh, projects that we're looking at to, to shore up some of these old buildings and, and, uh, correct some problems that are at a lot of these places, um, in order to, you know, for lack of a better word, pave the, the way for, you know, um, take care of what we have.
Yeah.
So, being good stewards. Yes, sir.
I want to get a, a chart that illustrates executive expenses exceeding, uh, income for next year, revenue projections for next year. We touched on that, but, uh, if there's a cap on that, anything that's made revenue needs to come from somewhere. So, we have.
So, that's that cash balance.
So, can you speak to that cash balance account? How much is there and how's that made?
I don't, I don't have what the, the cash was for, uh, what the, the, um, anticipated cash carryover is for all funds. But I'll show you what, um, I'm talking about with the general fund. So, if you look back here, you see.
Seven million.
Yeah. So, you have the six point seven plus what we budgeted in revenues, which gave us the fifty-four point five million. And that's supporting expenses of fifty-one point three million. So, there's a, an additional three million dollars there, uh, over and above in revenues that we're expecting to have. Um, now, if you just look at this though, with just what the calendar year revenue is, you would see only forty-seven point eight million and think, well, you're, you're budgeting fifty-one point three million off of forty-seven point eight million. Where is that other money coming from? And it's that, that cash carryover, so.
Thank you for that. And what I'm fishing for is a better understanding of the reliability of those sorts of extra revenue sources.
You mean a sort of cash carryover?
Yes.
Okay, um. It's always, since I've been at the commissioner's office, uh, late in two thousand seventeen, um, it's always been eight million dollars or more in there. And recently, of, of late, it's been considerably more because of the increase in, uh, the property taxes, the increase in the, uh, the sales tax. Now, we have an increase in sales tax, but I'm just saying, um, with the growth that's happened in Jogga County, we have gone from just a bedroom community to a lot of, uh, of big box retail stores that produce, um, a considerable amount of sales tax. And, uh, because of that, we've had a very healthy, uh, cash balance in the general fund. And, you know, uh, with the, uh, housing that we have, a lot of our, our levy departments have had, uh, decent revenue sources for their departments as well. So, um, I, like I said, uh, it, it's never been below eight million dollars since I've been with the county. Um, I've always tried to keep it up until recently at around a ten million dollar carryover. Um, cause like, like Dave said, you know, you don't want to have there be too much money in there um, without either, you know, finding a reasonable thing to expend it on, a responsible thing to expend it on, or finding a way to, to give it back to residents, so.
If I could just say something else to add to that. So, the thing that's always concerned me too since COVID, um, COVID took place was we had received the, the ARPA money. And, and that ARPA money made us, made us, I think, like, kind of this false strength on the other side of dollars and cents because it injected, you know, I, I wanna say close to twelve million or thirteen million dollars into our bottom line that we, you know, utilized for all the legal different costs that we could utilize those dollars for through that time. So, all of a sudden, we have this, 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 you know, gift in our, in our budget of an additional thirteen million dollars that we would've had to figure out a way to pay that before. And that's what's always concerned me on this side of it too, is that, that, when you look at that money, it's almost like, do we start at that envelope of saying, okay, how much above what we got for ARPA are we really? So, I don't, I, I don't take that lightly because I think that there's always that risk because we were able to offset and to grow our account, just like if you're in your own home. If somebody gave you, you know, two hundred thousand dollars to say, put this in your account, well, at the end of the, at the end of the year, you look like you did really good, but ultimately, what you, what you did was you utilized that and you were able to show this surplus. And that's why we, I always say we have to be careful. And I know that, you know, Commissioner Lennon was the same thing when he was he has, here as commissioner and that money came to us was, what if we don't take it? Because we had that thought process of just saying no to it. Well, we were basically told this is if we don't take it, they're just giving it to somebody else. So, bring it within our own, within, under our own umbrella here and do what we could do to be able to, to, to help and, and give us that boost. But I think we never could lose focus on the fact that that number truly has a, has a certain false inflation of that really short period of time that we got that money not, not long ago, that we cannot take that for granted and, and lose focus that we had that injection of cash into our budget.
Give humor another couple of, uh, questions or comments. In looking at the, uh, historical trend line of expense and, uh, revenue, we've seen both climb about forty-five percent above pre-COVID rates. Uh, so, there's a part of me that wonders as I look at these sorts of charts, is this that new normal we're supposed to be, uh, become accustomed to? That we're just consuming and expending as local government at a forty-five percent increase above pre-COVID rates? But there's also a question that I have that's connected to, um, those, those revenue sources. But there's also a question that I have that's connected to, um, those, those revenue sources. And I know it's sort of anathema, it's counter to the concepts of most government, but is there a prospect, uh, and this is just an open-ended question, is there a prospect for us to keep and hold on to build a rainy day fund for the future? And I know that certain sources of revenue, like federal and state grants, it's use it or lose it, but I'd love to find our county in a position where we build up and maintain a significant amount of, of, uh, excess revenue because then in the future, that might allow us to turn down state and federal grants in the case of emergency. So rather than that, you're projecting like eight to twelve million typically, that we can apply to general revenue or apply, and, excuse me, add to revenue to make annual budget, isn't there some consideration we could pay to maybe allowing that key relationship to give ourselves more comfort?
There, I'd have to do some research. I, I know that, uh, we are permitted to have a fund like that. I think it's limited, uh, to a certain percentage of the general fund revenue or expenses. So, um, we would not be able to exceed that. And I, I don't know, you wouldn't happen to know what that percentage is, Dave, would you? I know we have a contingency too, but that's actually just a, an expense line item. Um, and that's limited by a certain amount of, of revenue as well. I'll do some research on that and, and find out. We, we have, over the last few years, we've had capital reserve funds that we've set up, which the, um, um, set, sets aside money from the general fund for a period of ten years. So we, uh, have a fund that we set up for this building and we have a fund that we set up for the courthouse as well as other, um, uh, county properties that are going to need rehabilitation. Um, and that money can be set aside in those funds and the, um, the budget commission basically doesn't consider that when looking at the overall, um, cash, uh, that the government has. Um, but those are limited to a certain amount of time. And I believe the, the one that we used to build this building is from two thousand nineteen. So we have until twenty twenty nine to use up all the money that's left in this fund before it has to go back to the originating fund. But I think because we used bonds to build this building, we can't just send this money back to the general fund. It'd probably have to go into the, the debt retirement fund that we used to, to build this building. And we would use it to pay debt payments. And then there's one for the courthouse too, which, um, I believe we created that one in, uh, twenty twenty one. So we have a few more years, a couple more years on that one before that money has to, to go back. So, but I, in this building, I think we're only down to like a few hundred thousand left in the fund that built this building. And we've been using that to purchase various equipment and different things that we still need for the building that are ongoing, so.
Thank you.
With the estimated carryover, um, and you said a big part of that is property taxes, right?
Um, uh, a, yeah, a, a big, yeah. So the sales tax and the property tax.
Right, so it doesn't have to go on a big loop so you've got more money in that fund, in that balance, and you expect it to be a lot higher, you said. But then there's a lot of our property taxes which we're trying to lower.
Well, the, okay, so let me clarify the reasons. I, I've stated some of the reasons why it's always higher than that six point seven million. And it's because during the year, there are various revenue accounts that end up, um, collecting more than what was budgeted for that. So, um, for instance, the interest. So I, I talked a little bit about the interest. We budgeted this year three million. We're over four million dollars right now in, in interest revenue for this year. So that doesn't get reflected into that six point seven million until the end of the year. And, and that automatically becomes recognized revenue.
Right, that's what I'm asking though. If that number is even a little higher and the property taxes are what a lot of people are not happy with, can't we take some of that and not have as big of a number and have less property taxes?
And that's what, uh, the budget commission had done the, the last few years, lowering those JFS levies. So that's a direct, um, reduction in, uh, everybody's property taxes. When you go to pay your property tax bill, that JFS amount was not in there.
So it would have been worse. Our bills would have been worse. So can't we reduce it more? They went up a lot. Can't we reduce it from the six over that, that people are not, are having such a hard time with property taxes?
Right.
So since it didn't go, it could have gone up more, you're saying?
Um.
Can't we just have it not go up and then also go down? So boom, boom.
Yeah. And then, and that's what I think, and, you know, I, I can't really speak for the commissioners, but just understanding the operational philosophy that we've had, that would be what the desire of the, the commissioners would be is to, um, if we do not have a, um, valid, um, responsible way to spend that money to benefit, um, the county, um, they would rather have it back in the hands of the residents.
Yeah, because if you didn't have it, you wouldn't have to spend it. So you were charged, but you, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's a big loop.
Yeah, and, and I think what, I think what everybody's waiting for right now, and we're all kind of holding our breath, is what's happening with property taxes. So even if we decided, yeah, we're going to reduce a bunch of property taxes and then all of a sudden the property taxes are gone, you know, um, that it, it was for naught. So we wanted to see what's going to happen with property taxes and then how can we react based on what the situation is.
I think we'll take one more question. And then I do, just for everyone else, I have business cards in the back, so I don't want to stop the dialogue. So you're welcome to email additional questions to us, um, via our commissioner email or my email, and we're happy to take them. But one more, Dave.
I just wanted to make sure the audience understood this about the property tax. Adrian, I suppose you have available in your pile of charts, the one that shows how much, where the property taxes actually assess, who assesses the property tax and what percentages? So people understand that.
Do you, do you want me to show that from the tax budget? I could pull it up. Okay, hold on. It, it.
On personally. Yeah. We, TikTok. It's almost lunchtime. We still have agenda to cover.
Um.
I just think it's important for people to understand this.
Okay, so I, I think what you're talking about, Dave, is.
There you go, back there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, one dollar, and these are averages. So you may live in one area and pay a little bit more than this in, in a different, um, scenario or, or less. But when you take all the townships and you average, this is what people pay in Jogga County. So for every one dollar of property tax that a homeowner pays, um, the average is, uh, sixteen point seven cents funds county programs. The remaining eighty three point three cents funds the public schools, including the joint vocational school district, the townships, municipalities, public library, and the parks. So Jogga County, as far as that goes, gets sixteen point seven cents. School districts, uh, fifty four point two cents. Townships, about seventeen cents. And then there's much smaller pieces of the pie right there.
If you look at your property tax bill, that, it'll be, there'll be a pie chart like that just for you and your property. I always feel like I should go to the library more when I see that. A lot of my money went to the library this year.
So of, of that sixteen point seven cents, um, here's, here's the breakdown on the sixteen point seven. So the general fund gets five point one cents. Uh, the developmental disabilities gets five point seven cents. Children's services gets one point two. Annual health is one point six. Road and bridge is one point four, and senior citizens is one point four. So out of every dollar that you spend in property taxes, five point one cents of that goes to the general fund. And this is on average for all of the, uh, the townships in the county. This is what, that's what you were.
Yeah, and all the ones that agreed were voted on by the citizens.
That is correct, yes. So all the green ones that you see were levies that were approved by the, the residents.
Okay, we're going to have to move on. I apologize. I know there's a lot, we could probably talk about this for a long time. Um, the good news is, is you can go back and watch this, um, on our YouTube channel and you, you'll see this slide. It'll take up the full screen. So if you didn't get a photo of it, you can, you know, look it up on YouTube in the session and you'll be able to see it probably in the same amount of clarity there. But thank you, Adrian. Do you want to read, um, your agenda item or if you'd like me to read that?
Oh, I can.
Okay.
Say, so the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty five point two one two, or dash two one two, permanent annual appropriations for the year ending December thirty first, point twenty six, in accordance with O R C, sections five seven oh five point three eight and five seven oh five point four zero.
I move to crew.
I will second with the discussion when called.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yep, so my, 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 uh, position is to move to, uh, approve everything on the budget. Um, but, uh, I cannot, uh, cannot approve the ADP board budget, um, for, at, at the request of, uh, three million, three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty six. Um, just the, the, the increases, as you saw today, um, I think that there's, there's still a lot of questions that I need to have, um, answered that I don't feel comfortable with to move forward. Um, everything else that, um, that I, I took a lot of time and, and, and looked at, at, at these sixty six pages over and over and over again. And, um, so I, I would say that, um, I, I don't feel comfortable with a lot of the discrepancies that I see with, uh, with the ADP inconsistencies throughout, um, what the performance was for twenty twenty five and I, um, so once I would vote for it, I would vote yes, but not for the ADP portion of it.
Motion on the floor is to pass everything.
Yes.
Is that how you understand it?
Yes. Um, I mean, I guess, I'm not saying you don't have valid points, Commissioner, but I, this just feels to me like a little late in the game to.
No, I understand that. I just, I, I, I just don't feel right to, and if I have to vote no, I, obviously I'll probably get outvoted on the whole budget, but I am not going to just vote for, for, for the budget altogether with, with that piece in it. And I'm, I just don't feel comfortable. And I would think that anybody that really looks at that, at that budget responsibly and fiscally responsibly would probably say no also.
Can't you make a, a motion to amend?
If that's, if that's, uh, if that's permissible, motion to amend to, to exclude ADP.
So your motion is to not fund ADP at all?
Correct, until we, until we really have a, 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 a better sit down.
Yeah, I mean, I just have concerns about that, obviously, that we're December ninth. Um, and, I mean, we had a tax budget hearing for ADP. Unfortunately, I was the only commissioner that showed up for that. Um, I, I just feel like these issues should have been flagged earlier. I mean, we, you know, we passed the budget when, this summer. Um, I think that was a unanimous vote. The tax budget, that was a unanimous vote. Um.
I understand. And I, and I, and I, I tru, I truly understand where you're coming from and, um, I, I don't, don't fault you on what you're saying, but I just in good faith cannot, um, can't support that. So I, that's my position.
Okay, motion on the floor is, um, to pass the budget as is?
Was there a second to that?
Ralph seconded it.
He seconded it. Discussion.
With discussion.
Okay, let's call a question. Commissioner Spudlair?
No.
Mr. Breaking. Hey.
Yes. Okay. Item thirty one.
Oh, so this is actually, this is like good news in a way. Um, so I, I know that, that we got in our mailbox, the First Energy, um, distribution rate case, which, uh, I don't know, how many pages was it, Chrissy, you had to stand? It was a big boy. So I assume you gentlemen may have not read it, so, uh, I would not blame you. But I did, because I like this stuff. So I'm going to read the part that, uh, relates to Jogga County. Um, it says, finally on May, so this is from the P U C O. Finally, on May sixteenth, twenty twenty five, the Jogga County Board of Commissioners filed a public comment in this proceeding expressing concern over the proposed closure of First Energy Service Center in Middlefield, Ohio. The comment notes that the Middlefield Service Center is near the geographic center of Jogga County and that the service center is the only First Energy Ohio line shop located on Jogga County. Um, and then it says that we filed, uh, public comments, um, and our comments included a correspondence, uh, our correspondence with First Energy Ohio. The commission understands the concerns raised by the Jogga County Commissioners. Accordingly, we direct First Energy Ohio, uh, to work with staff, and then they tell that they have to do two things. They have to demonstrate to staff that First Energy Ohio has thoroughly explored all other alternatives to clear, closing the service center. And two, it has to demonstrate that the closure of this station will not have an adverse impact on the reliability of the circuits serving Jogga County. Staff is further directed to report back to the commission an appropriate proceeding if First Energy Ohio is unable to demonstrate that it has thoroughly explored all other alternatives to closure of the service station or that the closure of the station will not have an adverse impact upon the reliability of the circuits serving Jogga County. So, I mean, it's kind of interesting because it has to do both of those things. It has to say, we looked at everything else and it hasn't, um, impacted reliability. And if either one of those don't, um, aren't met, that they're going to have a problem with the P U C O. Um, so my suggestion from that, well, first of all, let me just say that I, I read a lot of P U C O decisions and I have never seen them call out a comment like this. And I, uh, I called up a P U C O attorney, it's a little more seasoned than me, and I said, have you ever seen this before? And he said, no, this is absolutely unprecedented that they, um, put this part in. So it might seem, um, routine, it is absolutely not, um, that they would, they would have anything to say about our comment. So, um, I think that was, that was a big win for us as commissioners. And my suggestion is I can reach out to the P U C O staff because I think we should be involved in that audit process. Because they're essentially saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna audit First Energy regarding this, um, closure. So I think we should say, hey, we want to be involved in that process. We want to look at the data. We want to be able to report back what we're seeing, um, in our county. So that would be my suggestion. If that's all right with you gentlemen, I will reach out to staff.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thoughts, Ralph?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Um, now we're on to our second public comment period. Um, again, this is on any topic, uh, with a three minute limit. So those wishing to make a comment or ask a question on matters of concern, please raise your hand to be called upon. Uh, begin by stating your full name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes to comment or ask a question, and you are kindly asked to refrain from any disorderly or disruptive con, conduct. Um, so if you can come up to the microphone if you have a comment, go ahead, Skip.
Skip, caller one two four four, you've been Burke Drive, Justland, Ohio, four four oh two six. Um, I want to thank Ralph for calling out, um, the ADP situation today, and I have a question for you. As you're probably aware, ADP is a separate board, um, constituted under the state of Ohio. That board is made up of a number of elected officials to include one county commissioner. And the auditor is designated as the secretary of that board. And he's also, I believe, in this situation, uh, the administrator of things that are going on in the board. But the point I'm making is it's a separate board. So any decisions transferring money, unless that's been predetermined, that board makes decisions on how management is done, how employees are managed, what they're paid and so on and so forth. The board should be making that decisions, not the auditor. What I heard the auditor say today made it sound like he's in total control of the ADP board, but he's not. He's a member of the ADP board. So I'm really concerned that the ADP board maybe is not living up to its responsibilities and/or it made it sound like the auditor thought he had the authority to simply transfer money from the auditor's office to the ADP board? Or, and maybe I'm confused on that, but whatever was being said today did not smell right to me. Uh, and so I'd like this board to be able to respond regarding what was going on and whether you're watching the store relative to the auditor and the ADP board. From what I could see in the presentations, past presentations, um, that Adrian made, it looks like. it looks like the chart, the expenditure chart on ADP has gone through the rough. And without explanation, to me, I'm gonna start paying more attention to the ADP Board meetings if they're published someplace. But with that said, I'd like this board to think about that and maybe respond in some way, because I'm very concerned there may be some goofiness going on there. And we've already lived through an experience with the auditor in the past, and some goofiness. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Howard, South Russell Village.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, you can, go ahead.
This is the 80th anniversary of the, the end of the Second World War in Japan. We had a man from Geogu County visit. He was on Missouri when the treaty was signed, and 80 years ago, Mr. Somrak. He passed away just recently. And I think we should ever keep in mind, December 7th, start of the war, on the USS Arizona, and now the USS Missouri is part of the museum complex in Pearl Harbor. And on the deck of the Missouri is an emblem that was put in the quarter deck that represents the end of the war. And the newspaper where these people here presented it this past month. And we should keep in mind that a group of wonderful people gave their lives, including Mr. Somrak to some degree, to help defeat the Japanese in the Second World War. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Come on up.
My name is Phil Malensick. I live in Hiram, 44234. I have a question on items nine through 13. If you take the, if you take the total mileage versus the expense, item number 10 is 5,533.06 per mile. If you look at item 13, it's 3,816.92. Is that a difference in contractor charges, or what? That's a significant difference there.
Yeah, I did ask that question. Because, well, for nine and 10, those are, I forget which way it goes.
We're paying them.
Yeah.
Nine and 10, we're paying them to do our work.
And then the other, it's reverse. And I think that was.
Next question is, the septic systems in Geogu County. I understand that everybody's gonna be billed $100 in the entire county for the septic tank systems. And it doesn't matter if you've had it installed a month ago, five years ago, which would be acceptable, right? Versus one that's 50. So why are the people that have a newer septic system being billed this $100? That's ridiculous. It's ludicrous.
Yeah.
So who's pocketing all this money? What are they doing with all this money? Why the people with a updated system is gonna be billed for $100 bucks? Doesn't make sense.
Just, I feel your pain. But clarification, the Board of County Commissioners has no jurisdiction over the Health Board. It's a separate entity.
And we did send a letter to the state expressing our concern about that program, which is mandated by state law.
So is the state pocketing all this money?
No, I mean, Adam, do you want to respond? But my understanding is that it's paying to run the program that the state mandates. I mean, this was one of the things when Commissioner Spitalary and I were talking about how the state takes a lot of our money and doesn't give it back. This is one of those things where it mandates this program, and then gives the county no money to pay for it.
Yeah, so I don't want you guys to be in the hot seat. So the Health Department, as mentioned, is given that authority required to go by state law. The newer systems, which are usually NPDS, I think is what you're referring to, those are not $100, but different. But NPDS systems, when you buy a system like that, you sign a contract with the Ohio EPA, you will have inspected twice a year, every single year. I have that system. It's the only system that is optional for my property. And so you actually sign a contract right then and there that you will commit to do this. I don't think any of us like it, but that is how the state runs it. And we have, you have no choice if you want that system. The other systems, depending on the age of them, and the system, and how it's made up, it's roughly about $100 for a five-year permit. So it's about $20 a year. That does just kind of maintain the program and the staffing. And then in Geogu County, the last time we did the evaluation of septic systems that were failing, it was, I think it was, it was 30 or 40% of systems that were inspected were failing. And that was dated going back most 20 years. So, which happens. I mean, the system's guilty, and it's not working eventually. So that is just part of it. A lot of it's just maintenance. And our goal with the citizens is to just include and develop maintenance. And if they have that ability, usually, the systems last a whole lot longer. You can get 40, 50 years on these systems if you just maintain them. And then we've also set up, I believe, Mrs. Breaking, was part when we started talking about it. But any additional revenue that we bring in actually goes to help people who cannot afford to maintain their systems. So that there's not, the helpers, helpers are not pocketing dollars, they just keep accumulating. The goal is to go back to the public. We've also looked at reducing people's rates as well, instead of just giving back to them. People, reduce their rates as well. So there's not a pocket of money anywhere close.
Thank you.
I've got one other question regarding that. So are the inspectors gonna coordinate with the Sheriff Department to come out on people's personal property to inspect the systems? Because they do not have any jurisdiction in Geogu County to come at will and walk everybody's property without permission of the landowners.
So I don't want.
They cannot do that.
I don't want to throw a sheriff's hooligan.
I will be calling the Sheriff's Department for trespassing.
So we reach out to people in advance. The Ohio EPA ones, when you sign it, says you get full authority to help them to be on your property. It's actually in the contract with the Ohio EPA, if you have that system. The other systems, we communicate with you, reach out to you, and go through that process, because we have, is required by state law. Go with that.
Any other public comment? Sir, please come up to the mic. Well, go ahead, you go first. Come on up. Please come up to the mic and introduce yourself.
I'm Jonathan Bradband. I'm a Geogu County resident. The issues around this budget that just passed kind of spread like wildfire. And some of us who weren't really paying close attention to it decided we were gonna look into it. So over the past couple of weeks, I've been poring through these slides and trying to make heads and tails of it. One of the things that stood out most to me, and I'm glad Commissioner Spitalary pointed it out, is ADP stands out like a sore thumb. I took the liberty, because I have contacts all over the state of Ohio and many of the 88 counties, of comparing Geogu County, our expenses and our staffing and ADP to other comparable counties. Comparable counties constitute between eight and 12 ADP employees. Geogu County, by comparison, as near as I can tell, has 16 full-time employees, plus three part-time employees. And to the point that was made earlier about putting in for overtime pay, it's my understanding that in the current budget, we have all 19 collecting overtime pay. So the argument, the counterargument, I forget who was making it. Was that Mr. Walder? Was making the counterargument that one person in particular had put in for time accumulated is a non-argument, because we have 19 people currently who are petitioning for overtime pay. So put all that together, and we have that, what is it, 3.5 million, Commissioner Spitalary? That 3.5 million does not compare to comparable counties in Ohio. It's extraordinarily high, and something just doesn't pass the smell test. Yes, we do have cybersecurity issues. And yes, we do have people that need to have computers installed. And we need cameras in elevators, but all counties need that. I think the comparison doesn't pass the smell test. I'm a little frustrated that this budget passed. I actually have a question. And this is just an average citizen curiosity question. If the budget had been denied today, and you'd pushed it back to those agencies in the county that are petitioning for those budgets, what would have happened? What's the timeframe? And would they be then forced to have come back, like ADP and others, with revised budgets in order to seek your approval? So I'd like an answer to that question. Thank you.
And just know, the Board doesn't have to answer your question during the public comment period. They can if they choose to.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jim McNeil, 16731, Clard and Troy Road, in Troy Township. I'd like to direct your attention, please, to item number 26. Where we're looking at a climate pollution reduction program. We're attempting to reduce a pollutant that does not exist. We're looking specifically at carbon dioxide, which is not a pollutant. And I would direct your attention to the tremendous, tremendous misfact that there's a relationship between atmospheric carbon dioxide concentration and temperature. Now, I speak as a chemist of 50 years' experience with atmospheric commissions monitoring and so on. If we look at the studies that were done at the Vostok Glacier in Antarctica, ice core samples were drilled down at great depths, pulling core samples out that bear gases that were dissolved into water millions of years ago. And we find many periods in Earth's climatic history where carbon dioxide concentration was infinitely higher than it was today, multiples thereof, and the temperature was lower. Carbon dioxide tends to dissolve into bodies of water. Carbon dioxide exhibits solubility that is directly related to temperature. As temperature goes down, the water will hold more carbon dioxide, i.e. the bodies of water on Earth. As the temperature increases, the ability to hold that carbon dioxide decreases. Witness that yourself by opening bottles of pop that are cold and warm. The warm ones will hiss more, because at higher temperatures, the liquid cannot hold that CO2. It's a fundamental law of science. And for us to go down this path, our President and our current management at EPA are on the right track. Carbon dioxide is plant food. It is not a pollutant. And again, Earth's temperature has been higher previously with lower concentrations of CO2. It's also been higher, basically, basically liberating more CO2 from bodies of water. So there is your fundamental science law. Law. Not theory, not hype, not nonsense. This is utter and complete nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
As far as Mr. Claypool's point about ADP, so that, I mean, I would think you would know this as a former Commissioner, but the ADP Board doesn't look at the financials of ADP. It certainly, it just approves the technology. So there may be times where the ADP Board approves a certain technology, and then the Commissioners could deny it, because they don't think it's a good financial investment. But it's not a financial oversight for ADP.
Okay, that concludes public comment, item number 32. Moving on to 33. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment and compensation of public employees pursuant to ORC 121.22G1.
And who all will be in the meeting?
Well, we have Kathy Hostetler and Mark Jimmison joining us.
I move to go into executive.
Second.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Breaking? Aye. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
I have you in at 12:07.
12:07.
We don't get overtime. No.